At 6:09 PM, I'm going to ask Mr. Christopher Palmer to do our invocation tonight. He is joining us. Are you there, Mr. Palmer?
I'm present.
Okay, thank you invocation for us and I'm going to ask Councilwoman Angie English to do the pledge of allegiance. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Thank you for bringing us all together here tonight. I pray for wisdom for the council, health for the city, and wholeness of the community in your name. Thank you.
Amen.
If we could all stand and place the flag, please. Repeat after me. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, just as one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Right. So, um, so we had a special meeting earlier discussing our housing element. So that cut into our time for a general meeting, but we're going to go ahead and get started. And, uh, Mr. Clerk, do, can you, can you do the roll call to see who's present on the city council?
Of course. Councilmember Montero.
Here.
Councilmember Patterson.
I'm here.
Councilmember Ray English.
Here.
Mayor Proton Valentine.
Here.
And Mayor Vargas.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you so much. All right, we, we have six presentations. Uh, we have a 10 minute limit, so if the presenters and the council hosts can try to keep it to that, that would be great. Item number three is a presentation introduction of Dr. Stephen Nelman of the Sentinel Valley Union High School District. Councilmember Montero, would you do us the honor of presenting him?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Dr. Nelman, a native of California, Dr. Nelman joined the US Army after high school and serving the 75th Ranger Regiment, the 82nd Airborne Division, and the 2nd Infantry Division at the various locations around the world. After being honorable discharged, he earned a bachelor's degree in biology, a master's degrees in education, and a doctor of education from USC. In his 20 years at the Sentinel Valley Union High School District, he has served as a teacher, associate principal, principal, coordinator of testing and technology, director of student service, assistant superintendent of human resources, and now the superintendent of the school. Hawthorne resident and community member for the past 15 years, he has served as the past quarter master of the Veterans of Federal Wars, Hawthorne Post 2075, and past president of the South Bay Chapter of the Association of California School Administrator. So, Dr. Nelman, if you're there, so welcome.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Montero. Uh, thank you to, um, uh, Mayor Vargas, members of Hawthorne City Council. I'm happy to be, uh, addressing you this evening. As a Hawthorne resident, I'd like to start by, uh, by thanking each of you for your dedication to our community throughout this pandemic. Uh, I'd especially like to recognize, uh, Chief Ishi and the Hawthorne Police Department, which have been so supportive of the district's mission during our time that our students were on distance learning. Uh, Officer Yoshida, Hawthorne High School's resource officer, uh, was instrumental in providing support for making home visits for our students who were absent or who were falling behind, delivering food and other assistance to needy families, taking crime reports and assisting with patrolling our schools. They are all to be commended. And again, thank you very much for everything you've done for the community. So, uh, the Sentinel Valley Union High School District's about 6,000 students strong this year and proud to report that we're back for in-person instruction for the 2122 school year. Uh, we know that many of our students have had a rough time during this past year, so we've added additional counselors, social workers, and other support staff. Uh, like all other districts in California this year, we're also offering independent study, um, for all the students. So if they desire to work from home, they can still do so if they're not quite ready to come back. Uh, we're also offering our full athletic program, student clubs, other activities such as dances and performances in person. Because we have all these extra programs, we require extra personnel. And like all the other districts, uh, we are still struggling to fill a lot of vacancies. So if any of you know anyone who's interested in teaching, substitute teaching, working as an instructional aide, uh, please check our website, uh, apply for those jobs. We need people to help. You may have noticed some construction projects at our school sites throughout the pandemic. In October, we're going to be having a ribbon cutting for reopening, uh, the new Nyman Theater at, uh, Nyman Hall Theater at Hawthorne High School. And in November, we'll have a ribbon cutting for dedicating the renovated administration building at Losinger High School. We're also going to be starting construction on all of our fields for new athletic facilities this year, and that should take about two years to finish up. I just want to say, say again, thank you to the community for the support, uh, for, uh, for passing the bonds, to provide all of these great, modern, state-of-the-art facilities for our schools. Our campuses look amazing. The students and staff all appreciate everything that's gone into this. So again, this was just really quick. I want to thank you for introducing me, just giving you a few updates about Sentinel Valley Union High School District. And, uh, we're excited to be back preparing students to graduate ready for college, career, and life. Thank you again.
Congratulations.
All right.
Very happy to see you as superintendent. This is great news.
Yeah, to the chair, uh, just, uh, you know, because I would need to say, uh, thank you to Dr. Stephen Milman for your service, because you've been in the Army and airborne, so thank you for your service, sir. And I think that you will be a fantastic role model for all our childrens in, in high school. So I'm glad that, uh, you were selected to replace Dr. O'Brien. And as you as a resident of the city, so you have, you know, invest in this city a long time before you got now. You were one of the stakeholders. So thank you very much for your service.
Through the chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, thank you. Um, uh, good evening, Dr. Nelman. Um, my pleasure, I, I was, had the pleasure of attending the breakfast you had a couple of weeks ago to, um, honor the Career Academies. And I just want to congratulate you on the Career Academies. They're just amazing. It gives our, our students such a great opportunity to pursue, um, whatever career direction they're interested in. And it was just interesting to, to see the, the students, how, um, articulate they are and how, how able they are to express their, their, um, interests and, and to engage the audience. And so thank you for developing our students.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for being.
Good night.
Good night. Item number four is a presentation introduction of Mr. Omar Khalil of the Islamic Center of Hawthorne. Mr. City Clerk, will you kindly introduce our guest?
Yes, good evening, everyone. I had the opportunity to briefly speak with Mr. Khalil a couple of weeks back, and, uh, he's actually here because he wanted to introduce himself to the council. So you have a floor, Mr. Khalil.
Hello, everyone. Uh, hello to all the council members here and the mayor and the pro temp, Mayor Proton as well. Uh, my name is Omar Khalil. I'm here, uh, representing the Muslim community in Hawthorne, California. I'm the new director and the assistant imam here at the Islamic Center of Hawthorne. Um, I just want to say a little bit about myself. I'm born and raised here in the South Bay. Uh, I, I went to a high school at West High and also graduated from Cal State Northridge. I graduated with accounting degree and I, I had a brief stint in the, uh, accounting world. I worked for Bill Lloyd, one of the big four, and I left that, uh, to work full-time as a director at the ICH Islamic Center of Hawthorne. Um, I love community work. I love nonprofit work. Um, I'm so happy to be here. Um, I'm so happy to, uh, make this change in my life. Um, uh, a little bit about the community I'm representing. Uh, we have, uh, K-8 school. I'm sure you've seen it on Hawthorne Way, uh, right in front of the police station. And also we have, uh, uh, marriage, uh, family, uh, therapy help, uh, coordinated by the, uh, the imam of the, of the mosque. We also do, um, transient help, uh, that we have some transits that walk into our community center asking for, um, either, uh, monetary assistance or, um, housing assistance and things of that nature. Actually, some of our community members actually do help in that regard. Um, yeah, we're here. Uh, we, we just want to say hello. And, uh, if you were at the World Best Program hosted by the, uh, city of Hawthorne, I think last week, um, uh, we were there as well. We had a booth. We had an arts and craft booth. Uh, we were doing, uh, Henna tattoos. So if you see, if you seen like a bunch of, uh, people with Henna tattoos, that was, that was us. So, um, just wanted to say hello. Uh, I'm here now. I'm here to, uh, uh, to hang out with you guys and, and help the city. So thank you for having me and, um, hope you guys have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Khalil. Um, yes, your booth was very popular. It was one of the best ones, so I thank you for, for the support. I don't know if anyone else wanted to add anything, but welcome to the community.
Thank you so much and congratulations on your new appointment. Thank you so much and congratulations. Okay.
Through the chair.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, uh, thank you.
He's gone.
Oh, no, he just cleared. All right.
All right, thank you so much. Item number five is a presentation of Angel City FC. Councilmember Ray English and Councilmember Patterson, uh, please proceed with your joint presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Uh, are Angel Cities FC here?
We're here.
Great. Hello, Angela.
Hello.
Julie. I want to make sure everyone's on before we start.
I think we're all here.
We're all here. Hello, Carrie. Okay, great. Mayor and City Council colleagues, it brings me great pleasure and excitement to introduce Angel City Football Club, the first professional women's sports team in Los Angeles, launching in 2022. Uh, this evening, we have before us, there's Julie Al, Alman, founder, president, and CEO at Angel City Football Club and entrepreneur. She has been named one of the 100 Most Creative People in Business by Fast Company and one of the Creative 50 by age, at age. Also, Angela Euclid Mangano, Vice President of Player Development and Operations at Angel City Football Club. She's a two-time Olympic gold medalist for US Soccer, two-time World Cup bronze medalist, former professional soccer player at, uh, Boston Breakers and the US Soccer Foundation's 2009 Humanitarian of the Year. Uh, we have a gold medalist before us, members, and if that's not exciting, I don't know what is truly, uh, but thank you. Uh, joining them is Carrie. Hi, Carrie. Carrie's the chief of staff at Angel City. And Owen Fanetti with Real, or I should say Rise, uh, real estate company management. We are here this evening, uh, and, 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 and moreover, uh, Owen, who's been tapped in assisting Angel City, uh, with their endeavors to find where to build their Angel City Training Facility. And it is my hope that they look no further than our city, uh, the city of Hawthorne, the city of good neighbors. And with that, Angel City, welcome. And Julie, if you could, please, go ahead.
Well, Angie, thank you so much. And to the mayor and all of the council members, thank you so much for your time. Um, I have a lot to share in 10 minutes, so I am going to get started. Um, as Angie said, I'm the co-founder and president of Angel City Football Club. Um, I started on this endeavor two years ago to bring a women's professional soccer team to LA. And we knew at the beginning that we wanted to build something different and unique. We wanted to build something that had a significant impact in the community and bring together people from my team, from investors, and from the community to make that happen. Um, Angel City is unique in that it's founded by three women, which you've probably never heard when you hear, when you think about a sports team. Um, Karen Norton, who's a venture capitalist here in Los Angeles, Natalie Portman, the actress and activist, and myself. We have a majority female ownership group, over 75% of our team are women, and we have a team that is majoritively women. We care about diversity, inclusivity, and building a team that is reflective of our community. We also believe in giving back to our community. Um, and that's what makes this project really unique. Um, and that we've shared with Angie is that it's not just about building a practice facility for Angel City, but it's about building community pitches so that the youth have the opportunity to not only learn about sports and to come together and to learn about teamwork, but also be, to be able to experience this incredible team we put together. Um, and before I go any further, I'd love to tell you more about my team, but instead of reading names off a list, we put together this video, which I think really summarizes the level of commitment from our owners, many of which you will recognize as, um, celebrities, athletes, entrepreneurs, media executives. But every single person in this video has a commitment to Angel City, to give back, to help us build our platform, and to help us make a difference. So please enjoy. Get this to work. Just double click it to work. Yep. We at Angel City Football Club are thinking differently about football. Just a game. This is bigger than a game. We want to build an organization where mission and capital can coexist. And that started from day one.
The group is known as Angel City, but there is tons of star power. It's trying to bring a professional women's soccer team to LA.
The group, joining forces after they attended a US Women's National Team match in LA back in 2019, was going to give them the fans what they deserve, and that is missing people. The best women's soccer team on the earth. I said what I said. I said what I said.
LA was recently ranked the number one soccer city in America. And this is where the Angel City Football Team will take flight. A city that loves soccer, that reads soccer, that celebrates soccer, and that looks at everything through a lens of gender.
For all the little girls, all the little boys that are going to grow up playing, coming here, calling at home. It's a beautiful moment. We've been waiting for this for a really, really long time.
Ready for game day. Bring it.
This is about all the fans that wanted an NWSL team here in Los Angeles. This is about the different supporter groups that have already been established.
You're going to see our team and our amazing supporters make as much impact as we can in the community.
Angel City.
I'm ready to cheer on our team, support women's sports, because I truly believe this is a game changer.
We are excited to be part of the founding supporter group.
Because it's going to stand for equality, inclusivity, and a huge step towards that.
There's 14 of us, former US Women's National Team players, as part of this ownership group. And we feel like it's coming full circle, that this is our legacy to help continue to grow the game, to grow the sport. And we can't think of a more fabulous place to do that.
We're going to be in the stadium. We're going to be in the stands. We're going to be cheering. So come, join us. Let's go. Let's make this the loudest, most amazing stadium we have ever fancied. But the only way we create that environment is if people get seats. If people put the deposits on those seats.
I can't wait to see my kids in an Angel City game in this stadium, wearing their favorite players' jersey, waving a flag, and going nuts every time you score, whatever you score in soccer.
This is our new home, and I am so excited. I can't wait to hear all the loud cheers. We spill a beer, popcorn, the goals are scored.
I can't wait to regret eating a third hot dog. I can't wait to spill some popcorn because we scored a goal and I just had to jump up and down.
We are Angel City. Ah, Angel City. Ah, Angel City. Angel City. We are Angel City.
Oh, my goodness.
Let's go, Ellen.
Follow. Go.
It's an exciting, exciting day.
I'm going to party in L.A. too.
The city, yeah.
How long until the first championship?
Oh, jeez.
I'm just kidding. 2022, baby.
So thank you, thank you for indulging me, but they, they say it better than everyone. And I think it's really important to note, I mean, we all, you know, are very close in Hollywood and, you know, we know, you know, something about some celebrities, but every single one of these is involved and engaged. Even Longoria in America Ferrara did three Instagram lives for us, talking about Hispanic Heritage Month. Angela Euclid, who you'll hear from later, hosted entire, um, week-long talks during Black History Month. Um, they all lean in because they recognize their involvement in Angel City has an impact in our community. And the bigger presence we have and the more we're able to amplify what we do, the bigger impact we can make. Um, and as you can see, it's an incredibly diverse ownership group, um, that really, I think, is reflective of the city that we are trying to support. Um, what makes Angel City, um, really different, and we talked about, is we're really committed to making a difference in the community. When we launched Angel City and announced that we were coming to Los Angeles, we also announced a three-year partnership with the LA 84 Foundation and their Play Equity Fund that uses sports to address social injustice. We wanted to show that purpose was important with us, and what we say is that we lead with passion and purpose. Our, our goal is to set higher expectations on and off the pitch. So every single thing that we do has a positive impact in our community. Um, and that comes across even when we're trying to generate revenue to run this club. So very early on, we launched the Angel City sponsorship model. No single sports team in the United States has this model. 10% of all of our sponsorship revenue goes back into the community through our social impact platform. That is three pillars: equity, essentials, and education. So literally, before we took $1, we made sure that 10% of it would go back into our community. And that is something that we are excited to bring to Hawthorne and how we address food insecurity, teach about nutrition and wellness, teach about, teach, teach kids about leadership, internships. Um, there's so many different ways that we can have impact in equity, essentials, and education. Here's a list of just some of our partners to date, um, that are supporting Angel City. Sprouts, where you're building gardens in schools. Um, with Jane Walker, we're supporting, we're supporting female entrepreneurs through their iFund. Um, Women Funding Marketplace with Birdies. We did a summer internship between them and ourselves with three BIPOC individuals from the ISF schools. Um, they did a summer internship with us and Birdies, um, and I can go on and on. But, um, the point is that every single thing we do, we have direct impact in our community. And we also focus on bringing revenue into our community. So as we think about where we put our practice facility, it's the same area where we want to house all of our teams that we, um, compete against. Well, so when Portland comes into town, we have to put them up, and that's revenue we can bring into the city. Um, not to mention building a world-class facility for the Olympics in 2028, that is something that we can offer to athletes as they come into the city. So as I just mentioned, our platform, um, covers three verticals: equity, essentials, and education. And I'd love to pass the baton to Angela Euclid Mangano, who is a former US Olympian, former gold medalist, um, investor in Angel City, and someone that is a great example of who was so involved in passion in what we're doing and kept raising her hand to help, that we said, okay, um, your time is too valuable and you're too valuable and we need you on our team. So she is our VP of Player Development and Logistics, that is also a role that does not exist in the National Women's Soccer League, because we want to take care of the players on the pitch and off the pitch and help develop them as a full person. And Angela has been brought on board to do just that.
Thanks, Julie. Uh, and just in keeping in line with doing things differently, when we talk about that 10% sponsorship model uh, and those three pillars: equity, essentials, and education, we just wanted to provide a little bit of a quick overview of some of the things that we've already done, uh, this year before even launching into our first season, uh, some of the, the important programs that we're paying attention to. Uh, the SOAR internship program, we partnered with Birdies, had incredible paid interns that came into Angel City, uh, were able to meet with different departments, and then at the end, uh, gave a final presentation. Uh, the Play Proud Initiative, um, in partnership with Common Goal, uh, providing LGBTQ curriculum, uh, free curriculum to, uh, soccer youth in our organizations, um, across, uh, uh, the, the youth landscape for soccer and providing that curriculum to them at no cost. The Anti-Racist Project, which Julie also spoke to, this is before I even came on board, uh, full-time with Angel City, a very important project that, with Common Goal, Oakland Roots, and the Shakai Fire as well, uh, providing also executive training and curriculum, uh, which will actually be launched in October. And then for the next pillar, looking at, um, uh, post-essentials, I'm caring, go to the next one. For education, uh, three programs already, um, starting the STEM program, which we are really looking at, uh, partnering with Core Digital, and that's providing, uh, year-round coding classes and direct mentorship to our youth and underserved communities. The coaching pathways, we, we noticed that their, uh, research has shown us that there's a decline in female coaches. Uh, this is the opposite direction of what we're really trying to achieve and, um, really help to empower and provide more pathways for females, especially within the sports industry. So alongside Gatorade, we have partnered, uh, to provide a coaching education program that will be dedicated to really providing more access pathways and then increasing those opportunities for female coaches. and then increasing those opportunities for female coaches in our sport. Additionally, the Career Workshops will be the last one that we're looking to do with celebrity and athlete owners as well. So, really looking at focusing on pathways, creating more opportunities, and just some examples of how we are looking to engage within our community.
Yeah, and I I know we're running short on time, so we'll leave this behind so you can understand more about it. But the one thing I want to make sure you understand is that none of this matters if we don't have the funds to make these programs. And I think a lot of people might come in and talk about the one or two things we're doing. This year, we've committed over $200,000 for these community programs. Next year, and for the next three years at a minimum, and we're not done selling, but we have already are planning on committing a minimum of $750,000, and will likely go up to close to a million dollars in impact that we can bring to Hawthorne and to other communities in these three pillars. We talked about the way that we lead with by example. We have an incredibly diverse, inclusive team. We want to make sure that the youth can see themselves in our organization, and we also just want to bring in the absolute best talent. One thing I'll leave you with is, you know, we are known as Angel City Football Club. Angel City represents all of this district, but what makes it really unique to us is how we think about Disneyland. Everyone knows that Disneyland's home is in Anaheim. They think about it in Southern California. They maybe not know where Anaheim is, but they know that Disneyland is in Anaheim. So where our practice facility is, where these women are going to spend five out of six days out of the week, where they're going to practice for three to four hours a day, is going to be in Hawthorne. So they're going to know that Angel City's home is in Hawthorne. And I think that's something that we are really proud of and excited to bring to your city. In addition, I think job opportunities as we build this practice facility, we put together these programs, and we bring revenue in through not only, you know, soccer activities that are coming to Los Angeles in the next couple of years, but also through the other clubs that have to come through to get to compete against us and hopefully leave disappointed after after the game is over.
Thank you so much. I want, Mayor, if you will, please, I'd like to give Councilmember Patterson an opportunity since this is a shared presentation.
Yes, go ahead. I appreciate it. You know, I just wanted to express how excited I am about the idea of bringing a professional sports team to the city of Hawthorne. But not just that, but having a really true community partner, and a partner that wants to really invest in our city and provide opportunities for our residents. And, you know, really look to make, you know, our our city a better place for the residents, and bring bring in dollars from outside the city, bring in traffic from outside the city, and bring in recognition. So, you know, we all know there's a lot of great things happening in the region, in the, you know, South Bay and the Southern California area. You know, we have a lot of big sporting events coming over the next couple of years, and, you know, us having the idea of us having a facility that can help kind of, you know, catch some of that traffic, us having a professional team that can participate and all that good stuff is really exciting. So, you know, I'm really excited to really hear what the rest of the council thinks, and, you know, and engaging in a conversation as to how we definitely can bring your team, bring your club to our city.
Thank you, Councilwoman Patterson. And in closing, I want Owen to be given the opportunity to just speak on the real, you know, meat and potatoes here of exactly what it is that Angel City is looking for in hopes of partnering with the city of Hawthorne and being able to deliver.
I'll keep it short and concise and say that the ethos of Angel City, the importance of community, the importance of identifying a city that understands partnership through and through, that it's not about revenue and exclusively a silent aspect, that the level of impact for a community and what the sports club can mean in evolving beyond sport, and how they connect, and sending leadership signals to the rest of the world, to sports, to women, to diversity, to inclusion. There's so many areas that we are so excited about, and when you think about Hawthorne, we see so many of those amazing elements of what could represent a fantastic future together. That's what gets us really excited. And from the real estate standpoint, there's some areas that are excited to welcome or try and welcome Angel City to them. And we are definitely excited to see, can we start conversations with your beautiful town and see if we can figure out a potential partnership structure.
Thank you so much. As you all know, Mayor and council colleagues, we have great synergy in our neighboring city of Inglewood with regards to the stadiums that they have built in our building, the Clippers, the Rams, the Chargers, Bank Stadium downtown that has soccer, black and blue, or it's black and gold, excuse me, black and gold, and the synergy that is there with regards to sports and entertainment. Angel City Football Club is looking to build a training facility. They are looking at Hawthorne. Where? The Hawthorne Memorial Center. How? Through discussions such as this, more importantly, the vision. And it's important for us to be open-minded and moreover, to have an opportunity to ask the questions here and or, again, through agreements and discussions, given direction to other staff. However, that in a nutshell is the presentation this evening. And if there's any questions from council colleagues or Mayor, we'll be more than happy to entertain those.
Anybody? Okay. Well, thank you for your presentation. Thank you for being here. Congratulations to Angel City FC. What about the cookies? You brought the cookies?
Oh, yes, you have to. I was hoping I got, I was hoping to get some conversation. Let me tell you.
My hand is up.
Can we show our, can we show? I I I wanted to show this. We made some cookies. We wanted to show that we have Angela here, we have, we have Julie. And with that, I I just want to, I just want to go ahead and just make a directive and ask for city attorney and and city manager to please entertain in discussions with Angel City Football Club with the hopes of bringing their training facility to Hawthorne. And anything more than that, you see, we want you. We want you badly.
We're excited and happy to talk with anybody at any time.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Montero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, and congratulations to Angel City Football Club. It was about time that L.A. would have a women's club soccer, right? Because you guys have been the star of the soccer in the United States, even before the men's soccer came to be popular, right?
That's right.
The women was the one that brought soccer into the United States and put us on the map, because, you know, with all the World Cups that you guys won, you know, a lot of them, and being number one in the world in soccer, so thank you very much. And it is exciting to see that you guys are willing to invest in in community of color, right? Especially when you talk about equity, education, and essential. So those are the three pillars that that it kind of resonated with me, because I used to be on a school board. So we talk about equity, we're talking about, you know, close the achievement gap, right? So all of those beautiful words stand. So it's good to see that you guys are putting the community first, even in 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 beyond your expectation, what the club would be. And I'm pretty sure it's going to be successful, because like you said, L.A., you know, is the seat of soccer. So, and 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 it had demonstrated that we can bring millions of people out to see soccer soccer games. So I'm excited. So let's see how the project will take place, and we'll talk more. I want to see drawings. I want to see, you know, what is going to look at the parking lot, so we'll we'll start talking.
It's going to be amazing.
Thank you, guys, for this opportunity today. It means the world to us.
Well, thank you, Carrie. Thank you, Owen. Thank you, Julie, Angela, Councilmember Patterson, Mayor, council colleagues. I think this is some really exciting times for Hawthorne. It's a game changer, especially for a city that everyone wants to call a destination city. We are our own now, could say that we're going to be a city to come to, a city that is thriving and growing. And I'm just so excited to know that it's with Angel City Football Club. Thank you so much.
Thanks, guys. Have a great rest of the meeting.
Thank you. A good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number six is a presentation on telehealth update. Councilmember Ray English, go ahead.
Thank you again, council colleagues and mayor. As you know, we entered into agreements with Telehealth Van, providing services to our city exclusively. I like the fact that we're not competing with other cities that are looking for services and programs to offer to their homeless and mental health needs. And so with that, I have Mr. Dion Rambo, who would give us a brief presentation on what they've been working on thus far and where we're at today with regards to results. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So you have on today from the Telehealth Van team, it's myself and Crystal, who's available if there's any questions in terms of logistics or drivers or how that whole thing works. But mine's going to be pretty brief. We've, you've, we've talked with me or in about the Telehealth Van, your last two sessions. But I'm honored to be here, definitely for the mayor and for the council members who are here. I appreciate the time. I appreciate you guys taking a chance on something that really just started, honestly, a year and a half ago, but has completely created this momentum that the entire county and the state's starting to look at. Which is why I'm happy about my short presentation today, just to kind of give you a verbal update. A few updates that we have made in in terms of the three vans that are exclusively in Hawthorne is we found a lot of holes, right, in in solutions. For example, of course, you know, I love BHS, they've been my client for 12 years. But we knew that we needed someone, because mental health is about sixty to seventy percent of some of the main issues. We knew that with, you know, not having someone on call from BHS, although we're working directly with Giselle over there and Celeste over there, we needed someone on call for your residences at all time, just in case. We've decided to hire direct people full-time, just making sure they're managing the needs of your community. So we were able to just take every dollar in the contract for the next four years and stretch it to physically hire full-time people who can make sure that they have the screening support, the trauma support, the domestic support, the shelter support that your residents may need. We also, if you guys didn't hear, we took the liberty of hiring a medical insurance person, who was going to help make sure that, this is a big one, this is a big one. I didn't know how big this was until maybe the last two weeks, when we were trying to figure out, once someone had addiction issues, what the process would be. We really dove into the process of it, and we we understood how important it was for medical insurance. So even without changing much of the scope at all with the contract of the diversion program, these are things that we just felt it was needed. We, you couldn't, we didn't want to Band-Aid, we didn't want to Band-Aid real challenges that your communities happen, especially with everything that Hawthorne is doing. I mean, honestly, you guys are, you guys are like city heroes. And and we, and honestly, just on a side note, I know a lot of cities, we deal with a lot of cities just as Rambo House. Hawthorne, you you guys are not afraid of taking these large chances and trying things out. I don't know, have you guys, I don't know if you guys have always been like this, but I'm I'm honored to actually be here. And I've been doing this now for almost 20 years with different city officials and programs. But to hear what you guys are doing, sitting inside these rooms, is amazing. It's it's amazing. So I'm excited. We're hiring the people that you need. The diversioned program is a game changer with the chief, working closely with the chief. And it's just a game changer just in general today. Obviously, you know, Von and Robert knows, we were shooting Amber, who who works for, I think it works for your department, Robert. We just shot her entire script, and and while I was sitting there, and she was reading the script, and you had all the cameras there, I realized, oh, my God, this is big. This is going to keep people like our family members out of jail. It's going to be one of the first times a city, just a city in general, has stepped up to the plate to do its its effort on keeping people out of jail with or without medical insurance. Just a resource that's going to help, you know, fix their their mental situation. So I'm honored to be here. We're working on it. In terms of time, and in terms of when we're going to officially launch, we've already started everything, as you guys know, I think, three weeks ago or so. We made a lot of traction. We officially opened the doors in October. We sent over some sample flyers and things to Von and to Robert, and which we can make to to the entire, to the to the entire board, if you want, whenever you're ready for that, whenever they green light the wording and those things. So we are ready to open the doors in October. I tell my staff and team, let's mess up. That just gives us the confidence to do something that hasn't been done before. So I'm saying to all of us, you know, we're, the Telehealth Van team, we're ready to kind of just mess up and save as many people as we can save in your community. The last thing is the ribbon cutting. So we're excited about that. That probably happened in about, maybe about three weeks or so. We'll work closely with Von in terms of doing it either at City Hall or Parks and Rec. But we're leaning toward City Hall. We know it's going to have a lot of media attention. We're going to have the vans out behind you. We're going to have probably the supervisor and people like that. And probably the other cities. My idea is to have other cities support Hawthorne at the ribbon cutting and saying, cities are kind of working together to find solutions for keeping, keeping the mental health under control and the homeless population number low. So that's my goal, is the ribbon cutting is not about the vans. It's about cities finding solutions to save homelessness. So we're proud to be here. We've been working diligently. Everyone who's been FaceTiming us, and we've been walking you through the office, you've seen how much we've been doing. So I'm glad to answer any questions for you, and we'll just keep working away every day for the contract. But I think you would appreciate the opportunity.
Through the chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Sounds very exciting. I'm I'm very much interested in see if, seeing if we can solve the mental health issue. And on that subject, what did, what have you observed about Hawthorne's problems with mental health vis a vis other cities? Is our problem average, worse, or what?
It's pretty average at at the end of the day. The the thing about mental health is, that's such a blanket statement that, you know, like, for example, when we have the vans out there, we're getting a lot of the families walking up.
What are you, I'm sorry, what are you empowered to do? When you, when you get the vans out there, what are you empowered to do?
Screen them and find out what's the best mental health partner they should go to and do. So let me rewalk you through the the process that we've created when a person walks up to the van. So when a person walks up to the van, when she walks up to the van, let's say her name is Lisa. When Lisa walks up to the van for the first time, we'll simply do an intake form, which is a very general form. It's not really getting into the deep, not to crannies of her personal, from a HIPAA standpoint. But we're just doing it just from a trackability standpoint. So even if her name was John Doe, we're doing it from a trackability standpoint for you all to see how things are going and what's the result. While she walks up to the van, we have what's called a local resource operator who comes on first. The local resource operator is key, because the local resource operator is who guides them to, do they need shelter? Do they need mental health, or do they need food? So that's the, that's what we do. The local resource operator guides them to who should pop on the screen next. When it comes to mental health, because that's usually where things fall into, if it's domestic, if it's addiction or something, it kind of falls into that large bucket. That's the person that we hired full-time. It's a doctor. She's from USC. In in terms of doctor and things like that, she is actually one of the heads of even Sharp, so the California Health and Rehabilitation. She implements a lot of their mental health programs as well. So we're working closely with them, hired them full-time, eight hours a day, to kind of do a screening of what they actually need. What we found was, some people just want to vent, and it it's keeping them. And sometimes the venting alone and finding out what to do with where they are mentally is what they need. They just need someone who's other than just their abuser, or someone who, the abusing side is actually one that we're starting to see come from under the covers. And and we were asking Wendy about this today. And one of the things that Wendy said about the abuse side, especially from what we were seeing in Hawthorne, because we had questions, was that a lot of the women who are the ones abused are, you know, tying with other homeless men who are abusing them just for shelter. So that's why she said we're seeing in Hawthorne more women who are homeless than we used to see in the past, before the pandemic. We're seeing more women pop on the scenes, but they're teaming with the men for protection. And so the men are becoming more abusive with them because of the current situation, financial, they're becoming more emotionally abused, sexually abused, et cetera. So your vans are offering that type of support. So when you go back to Lisa, Lisa can come to the van for one situation in terms of food, and she could leave talking about her mental health and abuse issues, and we can either lead them to the BHS, or we can let Lisa just simply vent and talk her off the ledge every time she comes to the van, because it'll be there every single day for her. So the mental health side is going to be a blanket, blanket side, we're not wraparound programs, giving her five different things. We're simply screening her to see where she is right now and how urgent the matter is to send her to Sharp, BHS, or calling the police at that matter.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Montero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Rambo.
Of course. Of course.
Um, now, clarify something, have you already begun seeing clients on the street? Or you're just doing an assessment first, have you already have a number per se?
Yeah, no, we're not doing, we haven't opened the actual video up for physical clients yet. Um, the only thing we've been doing is assessment, so if you drive through Hawthorne, you'll still see our vans sitting out there, etc., with our drivers. And our goal for the first, you know, two to three weeks was really just to find out, we were actually just getting a lot of homeless and low income, just walking up to the van. And that's where we were kind of keeping account of what the conversation was, when we were out there with your police, um, with your police unit once. You know, they were all walking up to the van asking, what's this, what's going on there, you mean, and a, a lot of them actually on that day was asking a lot about. Shelter, shelter was a big topic, shelter for their family, and these were people who lived with their wife and kids in like Explorer. Vans, like in the nine eyes sense store, about three families with that were parking just around the van, lived there every day and they just lived in their trucks. Um, they were more asking about the shelter situation, right? Um, and this is what we, this will come back to the office, we'll sit around our boardroom and say, okay. If we had to help them with shelter, what could we do, and that's how we found. That, you know, for example, I'll give you an example of things that we've been doing. Every, we, we figured that every morning between seven to nine, our staff has to come in early. Just to call resources in Hawthorne to see what's available, right? Housing with lots of changes every day, as you know, hop exchanges ongoingly, and then some won't take kids, some will. Some needs medical insurance, if some don't, right, and because of that, this is a daily thing, so we decided to put some of the dollars. That you're giving us towards that seven to nine timeframe of finding out what's available. We're working very closely with St. Margaret on their food that they have available every day, we're going to work that out. Um, with her directly, so, I'm sorry, with St. Margaret directly, so these are things that we're finding out just from assessing. The actual needs as they've been walking up asking us, I'm sure we're not honestly scraping the surface. This, this, I, I'm sure we're not scraping the surface, but it really has us here day and night trying to figure out what resources would we be able to offer. If these different questions came up.
So you mentioned something, some holes that you like to fix, uh, especially with BHS. Um, is there anything that we can do? To string the relationship between you and BHS, because you know, I, I'm very familiar with BHS. I know the executive director Shirley Summers, right? In that end, we can facilitate some type of a, a communication between yourself and uh, an executive director of BHS. Uh, Ms. Summers, um, to string the, the, the relationship because we want you to succeed, right? And, and the other thing that I would say for you to also reach out. To some of the churches in Hawthorne, because we have about thirty-four churches. And some of the churches are saying that they don't have the, the, the capa- the capacity or, or, or the manpower. To help these people that like you're talking about, that on housing with mental health issues, with drug, with drug abuse issues. So maybe to create a partnership with those churches to get you access to even more people that would be helpful.
Yeah.
For them to understand that it's something that they can refer to you, or you can refer to them, right? They also sometimes they provide food every week, right, so they have pantries, so, so, there is something that maybe you want to build on.
Yeah, I think that, so, in, in regard, for example, thank you very much though, I, I appreciate that, I think with the, um, with Shirley. As you know, Shirley pays, well, Shirley texted me today, so Shirley, Shirley's the one who, Shirley's actually my second client. From twelve years ago, so Shirley was the second, third nonprofit that Rambo House had. This is why I understand kind of the, between them and Sharp, this is why I understand a lot of those programs and things, I did mention to Shirley. About what we're doing with Hawthorne and she actually wants to meet with you all and us at a table, just to see how she can actually help you. And, and Shirley, and you know Shirley, so Shirley is always careful, but he knows that this is going to be big. But um, I can say that Shirley is one though who said, hey Rambo, do they have medical insurance or not? She said, we'll take anyone, but do they have medical insurance, you know, it was like one of those, and I said, well. No, they don't all have medical insurance, but that's something we were thinking about doing and hence is why. We decided to hire a full-time medical, uh, a mental, uh, um, um, medical insurance. Yeah, just to make sure that we can increase that, no other city has that, even St. Margaret's person. Their medical insurance person is only on Tuesdays for a few hours, so we found all those things out, DPSS, no one really had that on. Going person that your homeless could go to, or your low income, just your regular residences, no one had a physical person they could go to. In terms of BHS, so I do think that when we do open the doors, we should have. A, a personal meeting with someone like a BHS because they're going to be some of your biggest partners in this. I would love to meet your churches, I, I would love to kind of create this faith-based connection. Um, also, you guys have a large DCFS, Department of Child and Family Services in Hawthorne, I think that once the doors open. Um, I would love to meet with you guys more often, even for just for a period of time, so we can meet with these groups. At, you know, however you tell me to do it, we should meet with these groups that are taking care of the families in its own cluster. We could send them to these telehealth vans or create a system with them. And then that way, we can kind of keep putting out all their fires, since the, since faith-based churches. Have the respect of their, their, their community, we can leverage that to make sure that they get resources that, that they need. So.
You're ready, and I would, I would be glad to introduce you to a lot of stakeholder in the community, okay?
That'd be brilliant, I would love that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, do we have any, anybody else?
I have another question. Um, so, um, Mr. Rambo, what does success look like to you in terms of? When you, when you, after you've done your assessment, after you've done your referral. How do you, how will you be able to say to us, I, I've been successful with these individuals, what will that mean to? What will that mean when you've had success with, with each of the individuals you've interacted with?
You know, you actually stay in my brain when you ask me that two weeks ago, and that one question. And I remember saying to you, listen, no one's ever done it before, so just wanted to, and, and now with my staff that actually stays in my brain. So now I even have a clear answer for you, and I think over the course of weeks, the answer is going to get more clear. But um, what I'm tracking now as success is a trackable solution database. Right, which is why we're hiring people, I, I felt that I couldn't produce true success. Without having someone, when Lisa walked up to the van, having someone to talk to. It, I couldn't give them a flyer and call that success, you know, a- although I, I couldn't just tell them to go down the street to BHS. And call that success when they really didn't have a car, or they're really running from an abuser, so to me. Success is when you look at the database that we're now invested in, and we've just started building for you. That you'll be able to see when Lisa walked up, what happened. Did, did she physically go to a, did she physically go to a certain addiction place, did she go to a shelter? Or did we not have a chance to find success at all and we had to let her go, or she left? You should see the result of what every single person comes through, I have a feeling though. That although it may start at a slow pace, when it picks up, we're probably going to be. Um, like an abuser who always calls nine-one-one. I have a feeling that these telehealth vans are going to take a lot of pressure off of your police, and they're simply going to go to the van for resources. So I would like, I would like success to be, we can actually find the resource for them when they come, that would be success. And if that could be terms of numbers, that would be what we would go forward, is a certain number of successful people.
I'm, I would be looking to see if. If, when you say success, I would be looking to see if you're going to be reducing the number of people who come to you for service. And so that at some point, your service will no longer be needed, that would be success to me. To get these people help, the help they need, get them off the street, get them into housing. And, and, and get them into a better life, that would be.
You know, one of the things that we will look into implementing, if it's okay, is maybe a um, a survey or follow-up. System, we should probably implement, so when Lisa leaves, etc., we can actually follow up with her. In a week or two later, just to see how things are going, with maybe our local resource operator can call to do that. So maybe that's something we'll implement after we point them to a certain direction, or they speak to a certain mental health person, just see how things are going. Jesse made a, uh, he made a funny com- he made a funny uh joke, he said, you guys are going to be probably so good, no one's going to leave the city. We gotta figure out, we gotta figure out how to be resourceful, but not to have them lean on us too much. Where they become just dependent on telehealth van doing the work. So um, we'll find out, we'll find out as we are doing this, and we'll keep you, as you can see. We evolve as we go and we, we're very fast at evolving to find solutions, so we'll keep you posted on it weekly.
We'll find them home too.
Yes, it sounds like you guys are, are looking at that.
We'll have to find them homes, that's the key.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm just gonna close out with that, we, thank you for the opportunity and, and Mayor for your patience, thank you. Uh, we'll talk more and Von has direction on uh, the ribbon cutting and everything else that uh, may come our way in regards to. Um, tele- tele- telehealth van, so thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Um, item number seven is a presentation from the human, on the human resources recruitment update. Interim HR Director Yuse- Yusefi, um, we have the floor, let's keep it to ten minutes and ten minutes for the. I guess this is the last presentation, go ahead.
Hello, good evening, yes, good evening Mayor Vargas and members of the City Council. Uh, what I have for you tonight is a recruitment status report, and I will screen share, excuse me, to review that with you. Can everyone see that? Hopefully you can see this report.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Excuse me, all of a sudden. Let me first uh, let you know, uh, Council, that um, I've laid this out as best I could. To give you an overview of the recruitment activity. Let me review briefly the columns, uh, on the left you see position, that's the position title. And then you'll see reason for recruitment, and that's to give you an idea of what's prompting the recruitment activity. You'll see the number of vacancies that each recruitment is targeting. You'll see if we're aiming at full-time or full-time and part-time, or just specific part-time. In some cases, we've listed part-time recruitments here because of the amount of labor it does take, some of these part-time positions. We leave open on a continuous basis to address ongoing department need. Uh, then you will see uh, the column of open, competitive or promotional. And that's the type of recruitment that we've uh, opened, open competitive is it's open to the general public. And it's competitive in nature in terms of selection testing. Uh, promotional is generally selection testing, but it's only for a specific city department or. Only uh, closed to city employees only, most of these positions you'll see are open competitive. Uh, you'll see also the column for the specific department, in some cases, maybe the division is named, but generally, these are mostly departments that we've listed. And then you'll see the open date, the open date is when the recruitment was open, when we published a flyer on the city website. And then you see a closed date, when we closed the recruitment. Now the status, you should see a status there in terms of where are we with this recruitment. Uh, where you see continuous, as I said, is it still ongoing to meet ongoing department need? Or uh, po- potentially because it may be a difficult to fill position. We've put continuous to kind of monitor as applications come in and as possibly additional recruitment outreach is needed. To draw more applicants to the recruitment. Um, if you see an eligibility list date, that means the recruitment has closed, we established an eligibility list. And the list has been given to the department and is with the department to make the final selection, to fill the position or positions. And, and then on the far right is notes, and the notes are aimed to kind of give you a little bit more about status. If you see blank status or blank open or closed dates. So let me just let you know that um, most, the majority of these recruitments. Are either generated by positions that were open. Uh, I began uh, as an interim director with your agency in um, early July. And coming on board, we had several recruitments already open, so the initial task was to close those recruitments, get them completed. And at the same time, we had uh, new fiscal year positions that were added, so you'll see those in here. And then we'll see additional positions that have been added as a result of resignations or separation from employment. So these are shaded to kind of separate out, I've started by department, uh, in alpha order, we'll cover building and safety first. Um, uh, building and safety has a senior building plan check engineer. Uh, that position, we understand is crucial, but there's classification work that we need to complete. Meaning we need to write the job description, there's currently an associate level plan check. That we need to correspond in terms of qualifications and in terms of compensation that's been established. So we need to spend some time to do classification work, uh, we put a target date of completing that work on October fifteenth. Uh, the department has given us some kind of template for review that we're working with. To really help us write that description, so that's in process now. Uh, we recently opened building permit technician, uh, that was opened on September twentieth. And it will close in ten days, so we're almost at that closing deadline, uh, same for building inspector. And you'll see building inspector, we did have a recent resignation that will prompt additional vacancy. The department did get a part-time position as a result of the new budget. Uh, so there is some activity there to fill at least two vacancies, one part-time, one full-time. And uh, we do look at hopefully seeing um, an opportunity to, to promote to senior inspector as a result of a. A recent resignation, so we will be looking to uh, to fill at least two positions for building inspector in soon. And you'll see that um, we have a first review date of October first for building inspector. That means we just need to give a little bit more time to kind of see what comes in, we'll review, and if we need to extend that recruitment, we will. Or take some more aggressive maybe advertisement uh, efforts or outreach to specific departments, other agencies. That have building departments to see if we could recruit possibly from, from other agencies to get the level of experience that's needed. And then you'll see associate plan check engineer, there is a resignation coming up at the end of this month. And so that is pending and we will be opening that very soon. So you'll see building and safety, we have four positions uh, that we are working with. And then we have our city clerk, uh, recently is an administrative intern part-time. This recruitment is, is really open to any department, we generally do have a need to fill administrative interns with. With pretty much across the board departments, uh, this one right now is a result of a request from the city clerk's office. And that will be posted uh, within the next day. Now, recreation leader two is our parks and our community services, that's continuous. They constantly do need to review applications to determine if they can fill specific needs, that's a year-round recruitment process. Um, and office clerk one is part-time, there was a position uh, needed for community services and housing. Uh, we're happy to report, we did get to that recruitment completed, that's, those are both part-time positions. And so those positions have been filled, and I do understand, I believe one has already started in the housing department. And we have believe have a, an, another one starting in community services within the week. Uh, the next department is housing, and I just noticed unfortunately that we left off two positions for housing, uh, the housing uh, de- department. We've added housing coordinator though on this list, and we are close to posting that, that does need classification work. That was a new classification approved in the fiscal year uh, two thousand one twenty-two. And so we are close to completing that and we'll have that posted by the end of September, so the next couple of days. Now, the two positions that are not listed for housing, um, they came off only because we are now scheduling the oral board. And they should be on here and I apologize for that, but that's the management analyst. And we have that scheduled for October fourteenth, for an oral board to interview and then to establish an eligibility list. Actually, uh, let me backtrack, those two positions are non-classified, so they won't go through the civil service for certification. Once we complete the eligibility list, uh, we can just go ahead and hire directly and send it to the department. And so that's for management analysts, we also have housing assistant, and we have scheduled that for an oral board on October twenty-first. So those uh, two positions in housing, we should have hopefully completed by the end of this month. For a list to go to the department to begin their final selection. Uh, next comes the, the most important department, and that's our human resources, you need the staff to be able to get these recruitments done. Uh, unfortunately, when I began in early July, uh, we had three positions, full-time positions that were vacated here. In this office, uh, we had a loss of institutional knowledge, uh, from this loss, there were two positions that primarily did recruitments. And so that has uh, added to the, the workload for. And so that has uh added to the the workload for our office at this time. But we are targeting uh human resources analysts and the director uh by the end of this month. I am happy to report, we've had good a response to both positions and so we look forward to filling that very soon. Then I can scroll down to community uh director of planning and community development, that is a director position. Uh as as you may know, we had a vacancy in July, this recent July. And um that recruitment has been open since August sixth. And we extended it at the end of uh August, like around August twenty first. Because we do need to target some additional special outreach to get more applications, we have a few. But we really would like to see a few more from a competitive standpoint. Then you'll see the majority are from our two larger departments, uh you'll see the police department with uh seven recruitments. And uh you'll see police records technician, that has an eligibility list that was established back in June. And there is one candidate that's scheduled to start in October and then another one scheduled to start in January two thousand twenty two. Uh so again, happy to report that's a closed recruitment. Uh police officer recruit, those are continuous recruitments. Uh we opened that recruitment back in May of last uh yeah, two years ago, so it's been ongoing. And as you may know, those are difficult positions to fill, there's quite a process that our recruits uh applicants have to go through in terms of testing. There's physical agility, there's a written exam, uh once they make it on an eligibility list. Then there's the background process and unfortunately that's where we lose quite a bit of candidates. Uh at this time, I can report to you that as of May nineteenth, since that recruitment was open is continuous. There has been seven candidates appointed to recruit and have gone through uh at least two academies, two or three academies. Uh we currently have an academy now that we're targeting for January, but that's an o- ongoing for police to recruit. Uh then you'll see parking enforcement officer two, that's the full time position, uh three candidates that were targeted were appointed. Uh and that actually is what prompted recruit. Actually prompted vacancies uh for us to fill because we had promotions, we had people that were full time parking enforcement officers. They got promoted to police recruit. So uh so we are have filled the full time positions for the parking enforcement officer two. But on an ongoing basis, they need parking enforcement part time. So we are continuously interviewing, sending applications to the department, it's a part time position, they interview internally. And then they uh send those individuals to backgrounds and I can tell you that there's been at least seven appointed to date. Since uh September of last year when they opened this on a continuous basis. Then you'll see jailer, jailer, I I'm not aware of the number of vacancies, but uh we did run a recruitment. Back in June, it opened June seventh and we closed it in August and so there is an eligibility list and that's currently with. The department, uh and they have two candidates in backgrounds to fill that, so we anticipate. From those two po- possibly one higher that will come. And then uh information support technician, that's a position in the police department's IT. Uh they have decided to hold on that recruitment, we closed it, we have uh application screened. But we're holding on that recruitment, so we do need to understand where we'll go with that or we'll lose any qualified candidates. So that's in discussion with the department. Also, as you may know, we have a new police lieutenant as a result of the promotional that was done back in June. Um actually it was opened in June, uh closed at the end of June and we established an eligibility list back in a August, August nineteenth. And today we do have a promotion uh candidate that uh took effect back August twenty eighth. And so the rest of the positions on this list are public works. And you'll see uh most of these positions were recently opened about mid September. Associate engineer, assistant engineer, engineering trainee. Uh there's quite a need based on specific projects the department is working on and um you'll see specific dates there. Again, these are recently opened, but we are reviewing screening applications. Look to have that done soon and then schedule those uh selection testing following. So you can follow along with the rest of the positions there, uh a maintenance worker one and skilled maintenance worker. And again, just uh you can see that they're added positions, I think one vacancy is a result of a resignation. So this is the a summary of the recruitment activity that HR has uh been doing for the past couple of months, few months. Um but uh again, there are some priority recruitments as you know in this list. And uh we are working hard to to uh get those activities completed. I'm available to answer any questions.
Questions, anybody? Uh let's double check the council member Montero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh thank you uh Ms. Orman for the, to give us this update, this uh is a lot of position to fill. But I don't know if you can clarify something for me, I don't know, uh I didn't have a chance to talk to Von. But the director of planning and community developer. It was my understanding that we were not going to recruit for director of planning. We were, we were going to recruit for some uh like an administrative. Position that would see the planning. Department and the building and safety department and then we would have an assistant director for planning.
I see.
Councilmember Montero, you're absolutely correct, that is a typo here, uh we are moving fo- forward with uh as you advised uh. HR director on the the status and structure of that department.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
All right, yeah, but 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 this is good to see that uh you know you guys are active recruiting and it's a lot of position to be filled and then with. Yourself at the department have, you know, short staff, so. It's a commendum job that you have done so far, you know, been working on a part time level, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Right, um anybody, uh Angie, uh council member English, go ahead.
Yes, thank you Mayor, um Von, I'd like you to evaluate uh from what I'm reading here in the city clerk's office with regards to their internship program. Uh at the beginning of uh this year, city council members, myself and Patterson were given a briefing and were told um. A number of 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 uh interns were at that department and and I'd like to know just basically. What are they tasked to do, what are they being paid per hour? Um and the reason I say this is because I don't, I don't necessarily see in the department um when at least. When I'm around, I don't see interns, I just need to know what's the hours of operations for this um recruitment, so if you could get back to us with that.
Absolutely, direct received.
Thank you.
Okay, what else, anybody else, go ahead? All right, I guess we're okay. All right, thank you so much, Orma.
You're very welcome.
Time to get through our, to through the rest of the meeting. Item number eight was a presentation on the middle income housing program and it's been rescheduled for the October twelfth city council meeting. Mister clerk, please read the guidelines for oral communications, sir.
Uh Mr. Mayor, we're actually gonna be skipping them again, uh we did not receive any emails or phone calls for uh oral communications.
We we will wait thirty seconds to give an opportunity for the residents to call in, there is a delay, so there is an opportunity for them to call in. So we're making that accommodation as of now.
Yeah, and it's on the timer right now. Okay, we have thirty seconds.
Yeah, uh thank you, oral communication is close ordered, Mister clerk, your consent calendar, please, go ahead.
Um yes, Mr. Mayor, there are no bids or public hearings tonight. However, five items on the consent calendar, there are items eleven, twelve, fifteen, sixteen and nineteen for your consideration and approval. Item eleven, approval of waiver of full radiance for resolutions and or ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item twelve, city treasurer's request approval of the warrants. Item fifteen, resolution number eight three zero one, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California. Providing for the terms and conditions of employment of his employees represented by the Hawthorne Executive Group. According to the provisions of the Hawthorne Municipal Code and authorizing the interim human resources director to execute the H E G memorandum of understanding. Item sixteen, resolution number eight three zero four, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California. Declaring October twenty twenty one as domestic violence awareness month. Item nineteen, ordinance number two 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 four, second reading. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California approving engineering and traffic surveys prepared by. Hartsock and Crable Inc. for the city of Hawthorne and amending chapter ten point one six of the Hawthorne Municipal Code relating to prima facie speed limits. On various streets within the city for adoption.
Move to approve.
Second, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ray English?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
Hey, the vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Um we're ready for item number twenty one, general matters, correct, Mister State Clerk?
Correct.
Okay, item number twenty one is on general matters, it's an update on the implementation of the city's commercial facade. Rehabilitation program, uh Director Mack, uh I believe you're going to present this, is that correct?
Good evening, in partnership with the planning department, we're gonna have Mister Chris Palmer present this. And we will be updating you on the great work we've been doing in the meantime since our last presentation. And that is working on the program guidelines, the application. As well as the request for qualifications for assistance with our architectural work and construction consultants. I'm gonna hand it over to uh Mister Chris Palmer, thank you.
Thank you. Next slide, please. Um in July, two, um in July of two thousand twenty one, city introduced a facade improvement program. Intended to enable recovery from the devastating impacts of COVID nineteen. Uh since then, staff has been working to create program guidelines and application, reaching out to targeted businesses. And preparing an RFQ to establish an eligibility list for qualified architects. Staff developed the schedule and anticipates the first permit issuance by the end of the year, next slide, please. This is just a slide that kind of demonstrates um a breakdown of the money, uh we have one point two million dollar allocation. And over the life of the program, we're only gonna be allowed to spend approximately nine hundred thousand dollars on slum blight. Three hundred thousand dollars for low moderate, next slide. So the national objective to qualify for slum blight. You're gonna, we're gonna have to consider existing conditions, we're gonna have to do analysis and reporting of the requirements. Do some windshield surveys to collect data and we have to understand that not more than thirty percent of the total allocation can be spent in this. Slum blight category and slum blight will take care of uh situations like this, what you see before you is Crenshaw Village. Crenshaw Village is on the corner of El Segundo and Crenshaw and it's not in an immediate vicinity of a residential. So we would have to do a slum blight analysis to determine their eligibility, a slum blight analysis basically consists of. Uh someone assessing the existing conditions, as you could see, this is obviously blighted. But we would do a more detailed analysis, we'd take pictures, we would see if it has deteriorated paving, graffiti and things like that that contribute to slum. And blight, um next slide, please. Another national objective is low and moderate persons, uh um and so. What you have to do to qualify for low moderate is you have to have a full time job creation, um this slide says multiple part time jobs, but that. Should have been corrected, um what we actually uh do here is just monitor that they actually have a full time job. For the duration of the program, that they actually did create that job and they keep that job uh for as long as the council determines that it's appropriate to monitor. It serves the local community's needs, so this is a restaurant that you have, Meet California, and it's the furniture store, of course the furniture store is closed. But if we were to uh rehab that facade, that would likely attract someone to want to um. Start a business there, they would hire people and that would uh serve the community's needs. Um and not more than seventy percent of this allocation can be spent in the low to moderate category, next slide, please. This is just a example of uh the guidelines that we put together, you have it in your packet and the application. Next slide. So we released the request of request for qualifications today and so I just wanna kind of update some uh information that's on your uh printed packet. You have so a scheduled uh down on the first page and this updates that schedule, so if you have your packet before you. Uh we issued the RFP today, the proposals are due on the nineteenth of October. Selections affirm will be no later than the twenty sixth of October, uh we should have agreements in place. Conceptual design by November seventeenth of some of the uh businesses that are participating. And a final design and permit insurance for uh uh one of the businesses or several of the businesses should be done by November thirtieth and these are tentative dates. Uh we should, uh we hope to have them done quicker, but hopefully it doesn't take much longer than that, um next slide, please. This is where I'm gonna conclude and see if there are any questions, uh thank you very much.
Yeah, are there any questions from any of my council, uh my council colleagues?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
So um. Yes, thank you, um good evening and um I wanted to uh ask about the standards. What are the standards for determining, when you say facade improvement? When I think about facade improvement and I think about Crenshaw Village, which is what we saw before, I would think that. We would be looking at um. Re- uh rehabilitating the building. Painting it, perhaps remodeling it so that it has a, has a, has a very good look and it enhances the the. The um uh the 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 community so that when someone looks at it, they they want to actually go into that business. So is that what we're talking about when you say facade improvement, are you actually going to create um. Buildings that are attractive so that they enhance the, the the look of the the buildings um. You know, to make them more attractive for people to 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 look, to go into them.
Thank you for your question, um councilwoman, if you can go back a couple slides, please, to um the Crenshaw Village. Thank you, so the top slide is uh the elevation of the Crenshaw Village. And what I envisioned or you know when we get the development team together, um what's gonna likely happen is that whole facade is gonna change. You'll no longer see the dilapidated wood, even the round edges of that uh. That pop out are gonna change, the the roof tiling, everything is gonna change. And what we're gonna look to do for this one is have it mirror the new apartment building behind it with the kind of modern facade. Some straight edges and you know sconces on the walls to kind of brighten it up, it's 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 a dark corner. And um we're even gonna look to try to upgrade the ADA, the parking lot is terrible, um there there's so many things that um. Can be done with this, but clearing out all of the co violations is number one, uh a sign program would be number two. And you know redesign of the complete facade of the front of the building and everything visible from the streets, so we have a um, we have a good. Development standard in place, um but you know, we're gonna absolutely hold them to the highest standards, um the Hawthorne way.
So the facade improvement would also include refurbishing the parking lot?
Only if there's ADA um issues, if there's no ADA issues, uh we would not be able to re stripe the parking lot. Um the um owner of um the buildings or the businesses would have to contribute to that. But I can see with this one, there will be some ADA modifications, so uh this is a great candidate to have their parking lot uh refurbished as well.
So do we.
According to the standards.
Do we, do we pay for the whole thing or does the the owner have to contribute something?
We paid for this whole thing and we paid for this whole thing because it was a. To help business recover from devastation of COVID nineteen, our anticipation was that we would get uh more people to um. Benefit from the program and actually participate in the program if we offered it as a grant the first go around.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
Yes, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Uh thank you for the presentation, um did we already uh get the qual, did we get the. RFQ qualifications for architects to be selected, was that already done, maybe I missed that part.
Yes, um I skipped out uh the RFQ to six. Yes, um, I sent out, uh, the RFQ to six, um, businesses. I posted it into the, uh, Herald, uh, that'll be posted on Thursday, and it's gonna be on Hawthorne's, um, website.
Okay, so we're gonna be inquiring the, the architects, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and what is our hope? How, how, how many, uh, do you, do you anticipate or can project, uh, businesses benefiting from this?
Well, it, it depends on if it's slum blight and/or if it's low mod. So, um, if it's slum blight, this particular Crenshaw Village, um, is likely to take up the bulk of the funding.
Hmm.
Because the analysis that we have to do, uh, to, to make sure that it, uh, meets the qualifications and the amount of work that it's gonna take, um, and with, you know, uh, with what happened with COVID, everything is almost tripled in price. You're looking at two thousand dollars a square foot almost to, um, to participate, you know, in the, in the program, so that's gonna eat up a significant chunk. And at the same time, if you're going to do the low mod, um, that one, for every thirty-five thousand dollars we contribute, they have to create, um, a full-time job. So, there's other things that we could do to help assist in that, but I anticipate that if, if we could pull Crenshaw Village off, and like I said, we've been in the works behind the scenes talking to the owner, they're very ready to go, um, there's about seven businesses there. So that'll benefit seven businesses, and it's an entry point to the city. Um, other businesses, you know, that can qualify for slum blight that may not take as much, they may need, not necessarily a paint job, cause that won't qualify, but if they have deteriorated finishes, um, some, some damage to the building that can be done with some, you know, stucco and some other types of finishes, um, we can, we can achieve that. So I, I'm, I'm looking at Hawthorne Boulevard, Imperial Highway, Rosecrans, and other places. And so once we get the RFQ back and, and we get some designs before us and some, some bids, I'll come back to the council with, um, a, a, a more detailed expectation.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and i- 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 and if we can somehow help some of our businesses on Hawthorne Boulevard, um, desperately need it. And, and like you said, if it's, if it's, um, if it's something that's minimal and it's not gonna be as costly, but could get as many businesses that could benefit from it, I, I'm all for that. Thank you.
Uh, you're welcome. Mr. Palmer, I have a question, um, let me see if any of my other colleagues. Okay, so, okay, Councilmember Montero will be next, um, so our, uh, we had funds previously from the government that allowed us to do, uh, to do this. Um, what, so we ended up, uh, closing down those programs, so, uh, this is a sub, this program is a substitute for, for that, correct?
Correct, uh, from my understanding, there was funds that were allocated to do some, um, work at, um, the community center. And those community center funds were repurposed for this, which is, which is great.
Thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Montero?
Uh, thank you, it's me. Uh, yeah, uh, uh, my question is almost the, the similar to Councilwoman English, uh, because the, the objective here for, for, uh, when we discussed this, this program, it was to benefit, uh, most of the business that, you know, did the lottery, like Hawthorne Boulevard, some, some, the entrance of, of Hawthorne, right? It was not just one particular section of, of Hawthorne, but we, we were looking, we were looking to more to make Hawthorne like, look like, uh, a nice place for people to stop and shop, right? So ma- the major intersections or, or even Hawthorne Boulevard, Prairie, uh, uh, Crenshaw, Inglewood, uh, Imperial is, is the, is the lift, to lift those business so we can have a, 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 a good visual when people come to Hawthorne, oh, this city looks beautiful, let me stop and let me shop. So it's not just one particular business in, in one central shop that has six or, or seven shops. And I do agree that Crenshaw Village needs to be, uh, remodeled, but, uh, we wanted more diverse, more business to be involved, especially the like, uh, Ms. English said Hawthorne Boulevard and some areas of, uh, Imperial, Inglewood, Prairie, and Crenshaw, so we wanna make sure even now in El Segundo, we wanna, you know, give a lift to all this business, not, not just a few, because I'm, I, you know, even I'm willing for us to put more money into the program if it's needed, uh, from, from the, uh, from the heart, uh, because, because I think we do need to, to revamp Hawthorne.
I agree, and I, 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 I think that the, uh, the best idea is to consider, um,
And the water off.
Is that to consider additional funding, um, for the program. Um, you know, this, this was envisioned to specifically try to help, uh, the devastation from COVID, and that's why we're offering, um, grants. There are other opportunities where they could do, uh, some type of, that they could put up some, some money and we can match it and different things like that, but that, that'll come down the road. Um, putting my planning hat on, um, it, it's, it's gonna take, uh, a larger collective effort. Um, our municipal code needs to be updated to, to create these standards, and what'll happen is as businesses transition from one business to another on Hawthorne Boulevard, they'll have to comply, they'll have to bring their, uh, businesses up to a certain code, once we strengthen our, um, municipal code and our development standards. But, um, as far as this program is concerned, uh, with the one point two million dollars allocated, you know, minus the, um, the administrative fees and then having to match the national objectives to, to actually get this money from, um, HUD, uh, one point two million dollars doesn't go as far as, as, as you may think, especially with, uh, the, the rise in, in costs, I mean, the, the wood cost alone, I, I, I'm shocked with how much like a pallet of wood has, has, has increased over the last year and a half. And so, um, well, you know, I want you to understand that, you know, staff is, is working hard. We have, um, myself, uh, the director of CDPG, uh, interim city manager, we've actually went from one end of Hawthorne Boulevard to the other, one end of Imperial to the other, up and down Rosecrans, and we've gotten out and we've talked to businesses and, and you'd be surprised that some people are not interested. And so whoever's interested, we want to get them, and whoever cannot, uh, benefit from the program, they'll definitely be on a list, and I'll be coming to the council again saying, hey, we couldn't help these twelve people because we ran out of money, what can we do?
Councilmember Montero, what we can do as a group, we'll, we'll take a second look at Hawthorne Boulevard, and we'll, uh, depict what businesses might fit into the category of help, and we'll take a second look and report back.
All right, thank you, yeah, yeah, can we keep our option open? Because, uh, uh, yeah, if we need more money, maybe we'll try to find money somewhere else, too.
Will do, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Mayor Proton, go ahead.
Yes, I just had a clarifying question, so we only had one point two million available, and why is that? I, I thought we had more available for facade improvement.
Chris, if you can, uh, Mr. Palmer, if you can ask, uh, for the PowerPoint to go back maybe to the scale that you have there, that depicts the two programs and amount of money for each program, and if you can describe how those programs fit into what areas? Yes, thank you.
So it's, it's roughly one point two, it, it's, it's close, it's, it's one, one million two hundred ninety-three and some change. And then there's, um, be- because we have to do some blight analysis, there's, there's money that's gonna come from that one point two, um, the administrative costs. There's costs that are gonna have to be covered, uh, by the building permits that they're gonna need, because we're paying for the entire, uh, construction, we're gonna pay for the design, we're gonna pay for the building permits, um, and if whatever else, uh, they need, and so all of that is coming out of, of the approximate one point two. And the, the slum blight, we can only spend a certain amount in that section. And the slum blight is one of the most expensive, uh, programs to have because we have to get out in the field and do surveys. We have to take pictures and document that the area is, uh, slum or has blight so that when, um, HUD does their, um, reporting and they audit, um, and they look at our records, they're gon- we're gonna be able to prove that we spent the money appropriately. And so it just depends on which category the construction falls under to see which one is gonna, you know, come from that bucket of money.
If I may also, this is, um, Kimberly Mack, Director of Housing. The one point two million is the amount that was approved by City Council with the, uh, action plan that came to the council and also referenced in the twenty twenty-one caper, uh, that was recently passed by the council. So that is the original amount for this program, um, and that hasn't, uh, changed.
Okay, all right, thank you very much for Mr. uh, Mr. Palmer and Ms. Mac. Thank you so much for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is exciting, we're going to get some facade improvements along the, the Boulevard and other locations, so this is great. Okay?
You remember back in the day, Mayor?
Yeah.
We had, you know, you, you mentioned we had the program back in the day and-
Yeah, we did.
And, um, they, they, they look good even, even now.
We have the redevelopment funds, remember the redevelopment funds? But, um, I guess the federal government did away with that.
Yep.
So, okay, thank you so much. So let's take a quick look, I'll make a motion to receive and file this report.
Second.
Uh, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ray English?
Yes.
Council, uh, Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council's voting yes.
Item twenty-two is the cannabis program implementation, the ad hoc committee, Mr. City Attorney Robertson. Please proceed with the matter at hand, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, this'll be fairly quick, I, if you recall the last council meeting, uh, we were discussing how to form ad hoc committee for the cannabis program. And I was given direction to look at other cities and see what kind of membership made up their committees for their cannabis program. So, uh, one thing that I realized as I was evaluating other committees related to cannabis in other cities is that there's different types of, uh, committees. And initially, I think the ad hoc committee was suggested by Councilman Patterson. Um, and when I looked into it, what I was suggesting at the last meeting was a initial working group. Um, we had one discussion with the consultant that was selected by City Council. And when I discussed what I envisioned mainly including, uh, the staff of city attorney and the city manager, planning and the police department, along with a, uh, a member of the city council, it's what, what the consultant said was that that is more like a working group, and that's a initial implementation of the program. So we would study things such as the ordinance, uh, the licensing procedures and things of that nature. When I examined other cities, they have specific committees, a lot of them is for, um, taking applications for license for commercial retail cannabis stores, dispensaries. And they had other, um, committees types for oversight and things of that nature. And the, the makeup of the committees for these cities, and I kind of looked into the Southern California along with Northern California, it, it just varies from one city to another. Um, we had, they had some committees, it wasn't really a committee, it's basically the licensing application goes through the city manager's department, there were a few cities like that, uh, City of Los Angeles Cannabis Regulations Commission. They mainly made up of different individual professionals in the community, um, including attorneys and community leaders, a CPA, uh, someone from their neighborhood council, a medical doctor, a UCLA professor. Uh, so i- it just varies from different cities, but what I, um, suggested for the city council in the last meeting is, is the, the starting point for, uh, beginning and forming this cannabis program for the city, which is working with a consultant, um, and having discussed basically what they envisioned. And before we actually have a read on a contract, we, um, basically what they're suggesting is coming up with ordinance and things of that nature. Um, and, and this is something new for the staff. So what I suggested, I changed the name from ad hoc committee to a working group or working committee. Um, so my recommendation is to just get this thing off, off the ground, um, to, at a beginning point is to work with the consultant and, and examine different types of ordinance for different cities and what the consultant will recommend, uh, to get this, um, program started. And what the consultant suggested is that in terms of the neighborhood, community, forming the committees, that's maybe a little bit later, such as, you know, oversight committee, we could have more than one committee. But what I was suggesting at the last meeting was essentially just to get the program off the ground by working with the consultant and just dealing with the technical aspects of it. So that's what I'm proposing here at this, uh, for this agenda.
I move to accept your proposal.
Second.
I have a question.
Okay, there's a motion, you could, uh, you could make, ask a question, uh, but the motion has been seconded, go ahead.
So I just wanted some clarification, you're suggesting that, uh, the working group be formed after ordinance is, uh, is passed?
No, 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 the working group will work with a consultant in coming up with the, with the ordinance for the program. So that, what I'm, the working group will deal with the technical aspect of getting this program off the ground because, you know, we, staff does not have experience in dealing with implementing a cannabis program. That's why we'll be, the working group will be working with a consultant, uh, coming back with recommendations, and if there's ordinance for council to approve.
And, and the motion is to approve a working group, that consists of whom?
Uh, that would be consisting of one council member and, uh, one city attorney or his designated city manager or his designated planning department and the police department.
Or is it just to get it off the ground?
Yes.
Yeah, there may be another committee or working group for other purposes or processes.
Correct, and we will be coming back with recommendations for another type of committee for accepting licensing, uh, applications for licensing and things of that nature.
Got it.
Thank you, roll call vote, please.
Uh, Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ray English?
Yes.
Mayor, uh, Proton Valentine, I mean, Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
Okay, and Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
All right, the vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Councilmembers, we'll move on to the city manager's consent calendar, please.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I don't think that, uh, you cannot move ahead without from the, uh, so who is the council's gonna be on that working committee?
Is it, it's so, under the government code, um, you know, if we wanna do it at this meeting, it will be a selection by the mayor and then to be voted to be approved by the city council.
Um, let's just go ahead and do it at the next meeting, just so we could have a standalone, I, standalone item, please.
That'll be fine, I'll, I'll agendize it for the next meeting on the twelfth.
Next is the city manager's consent calendar.
Good evening, um, Mayor, Mayor Proton, City Council. I have item twenty-four is the asset, uh, fortress, fortress fund. The city council considers appropriating two hundred and twelve thousand from the police department asset fortress fund for the purchase of five police vehicles and approve a purchase order not to exceed two hundred and twelve thousand dollars to the vehicle dealership identified by Akuma Enterprise for the purchase of the vehicles from account number two three zero dash two one zero zero dash two one zero two dash zero 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 dash four seven four zero.
Uh, I'll make a motion on this first item, please.
Second.
Um, I, we'll give it to Councilwoman English, uh, roll call vote, please.
Hey, Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ray's English?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Item number twenty-five, please.
Is a contract service agreement for Vital Medical Service at, excuse me, uh, LLC for the Hawthorne Police Department. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request to pull item twenty-five to allow some corrections. Um, we plan to bring this item back at the next council meeting.
Okay, um, if there's no, i- is everybody in concurrence?
Yes.
I'll defer to my rest of my council member colleagues, okay, thank you. Item number twenty- Twenty-six?
Item twenty-six is a correction to the Hawthorne Police Officer Association POA mandarinum of Understanding MOU for the term of July first, twenty twenty-one to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Staff is recommending that city council, can, city council authorizes the city negotiators to appropriate amend the MOU to correct the retroactive date of July thirty-first, twenty twenty-one that would inadvertently ex- exclude it, uh, in the current MOU.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
How about Councilmember Montero has a second, roll call vote please?
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
Alright, the vote reflects Mayor and council members voting yes.
Lastly, we have item twenty seven is approval of fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two blanket purchase orders.
Bro, uh I make a motion.
Second.
Roll call vote please.
Alright, Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and council members voting yes.
Thank you, is everything okay?
Yeah, Mister Mayor, that concludes my consent calendar.
Okay, thank you very much. City and council discussion action items, um item number thirty is under the discussion for AB three hun- three sixty one. Uh findings to allow teleconference meetings and that's uh. I'm going to end up deferring to our city attorney on that, um the city council has considered the circumstances of the state. Of emergency that we find ourselves in because of COVID nineteen. And the different variants, the Delta variant, the M variant and any other variants that are uh popping up. And as the state and local health officials continue to recommend measures to promote social distancing. And because AB three sixty one requires that the city council vote to approve these findings. I would like to make a motion to approve the findings, I'll make the motion um after our city attorney, further insight, please.
This Mister Mayor, uh this was just recently signed by the governor, uh AB three sixty one, basically. Um that's the reason why that we in the oral communication, one portion is during the. Oral communication, we have to allow public to make comments in real time. If you recall, we had done before is that in our face sheet of the agenda. Um it tells the public to call ahead and that's not in real time, so. Um we, the AB three sixty one, uh Governor Newsom signed it so that it would go into effect on October first, actually. Uh we just wanted to get a head start on this because every thirty days with the council is required to find the findings of what you just. Uh what you just read out, um so we wanna do this so that our next findings for the same factors. Uh in following AB three sixty one would be our meeting on October twenty sixth. So that's the purpose of it, we're just complying with the um the mandate that's required under AB three sixty one that allows. Teleconference meetings and that's what we're doing until we, so basically until we find that. Um that we no longer need to take measures for uh the social distancing and whatnot. And that because the city feels that it's safest to not have council meetings at this point. In an enclosed setting and that we should allow teleconferencing uh meetings, then we're, we have to make these findings every thirty days.
That's all, I think that sounds great, um we have been in compliance, just to clarify, just to make sure that everybody understands. Uh we have been in compliance before when we had oral communications and we people were calling ahead of time. But the state discovered that it would be more most uh. Uh appropriate to allow people to call directly to the city council, uh to the city clerk's office. Up until the actual oral communication session starts and throughout the end of it. So they're given an opportunity to call in real time as if they were in person, right? Until we find that there's nobody that wants to speak because nobody has called in, then I just go ahead and adjourn. Um I close that part out, is that correct?
I- it's correct and that's the reason why, because there's a lag time between Zoom and real time, that's why we wanted to give additional thirty seconds. Before you close the oral communications.
Between, um I believe between the Zoom and the cable, right?
Yes, Zoom and cable, there's um estimated few seconds of delay.
Okay, so, so we accept the direction from the state government and I make a motion to approve the findings.
I would second Mister Mayor, but I wanted to.
Yeah, go ahead.
I wanna say something because the, a lot of people in the community are asking us. Uh when uh when did we thinking about go back to the dais? People been asking, when are we planning to do that? Well, do we have any plan, are we gonna go on and on and on?
City uh city attorney, what what what's the direction, what's our uh, what's our latitude? On that issue, on what Councilmember Montero mentioned, what's our opportunity to?
Well, my understanding is that there are some cities that have opened, um I I think that would be another agenda item. For discussion for the council to vote on, when the majority of the council feel that it is safe enough. To have a council meeting in an enclosed setting. Um I know that that there are. Taping with six feet social distancing inside city hall in case we uh in case we have in-person hearing meetings. But at the same time, I don't know how many people would be allowed to come into council meeting. When we have that kind of social distancing in the seats and um and and if. I don't know whether the council at this point is comfortable that it's it's safe to have a a meeting in a enclosed setting. Um there is a variant, I understand that the numbers are getting a little better at this point. But that's for council to decide and to consider and to discuss, uh we could agendize it for another meeting. Um when council feel that it's appropriate, um and when we feel that it's safe enough to have a a meeting in a. Full setting, then we will no longer need to have these findings and whatnot.
I would like to agendize it, um Mister City Attorney. And uh because I think, I think it's time to have a discussion about it, I'm, I personally think uh. I would like to see us resume our in-person meetings.
So what, you're looking at agendize it as a discussion action item or or as a, I'd never wanna vote on?
Oh, I I think we could just put it as a a discussion action item for, um if you want it for the meeting of the twelfth of October. Or the twenty sixth, however you feel comfortable.
I I I I I support that, I'd rather have it as a discussion item because I wouldn't, there's just some considerations that maybe we could work out. During the discussion items that I'd rather avoid as to. Uh and not do that when we actually have an item to vote on, it's kind of a little bit more awkward, so if we could develop something. I mean, do you have an opinion, Councilmember Montero?
Yeah, discussion item for the twelfth.
You you concur?
Yes.
Okay.
Then we'll have more guidelines from the LA County uh on stuff, so.
Yeah, you could uh, we could get some more information from staff that they might find out or if anybody here finds some additional information. Councilmember English, you had your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, um I think, I think for the most part, you know, um. A whole lot of uh cities and and elected offices, including, you know, um. Committee, committee hearings and whatnot are still being done on Zoom. I don't, I don't, I don't see any that are uh sharing the same room. Uh or space, I know City Attorney Kim made a good point with regards to. The filming crew and and you know, the audio and camera and everything that's required. To 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 do that and um I have some reservations with regards to. Um my distance in between other council colleagues and um. You know, those those concerns that are still there.
Look, yeah, that's why we can have a discussion items.
Meeting.
Yeah, we could have a discussion, I have some reservations and I'm I'm curious about how we could go forward too. So I'm kind of up in the air, I'm either this way or that way, so.
If if I may, uh we do have a committee, COVID nineteen committee, maybe uh we could invite a a. A presentation on the current status, but I mean, it's it's on the news, so if you prefer, we could. We could have somebody from that committee come in and give you the current stats.
That would be great, that would be good.
Yeah, Mister Mayor, I have a question for you, would you like staff to prepare a staff report, uh surveying the cities? Uh surrounding cities, see how they're participating in their council meetings?
Well, yeah, I mean, just come, come to, we'll we'll have our opinions, however strong our opinions are. But we would also like to hear from you guys as to the logistics because we're gonna have staff. Be out there and trying to coordinate things, so we wanna hear your guys' opinions, but. I mean, if the director from the council major uh majority or all of us would be, let's go for it, we just make it happen, but. Uh just give us something on the logistics, please.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, thanks, I appreciate it. Um.
Can we go ahead and vote, roll call?
Wait, wait, just a moment, uh so, does that call for a vote?
No, that's for the three, AB three sixty one.
But yeah, I think, didn't we?
I think we did vote on that already.
Yeah.
We did vote, we'll leave it three sixty one.
How about we we just repeat it for the sake of, if we didn't, roll, I make a motion?
I did second.
Okay.
Second, but we didn't call it, that's why.
Yeah, we didn't make a, we didn't vote.
Roll call vote, please, thank you.
Alright, Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and council members voting yes.
Okay, item thirty one is uh, I like this item, thank you, Councilwoman, uh is the discussion on handbill enforcement. Councilmember Reyes English, you brought this up, um so go ahead and proceed on discussing it.
Can you remind me?
The handbill enforcement, the stuff that they hand out, that they put on your car, on your cars, all that stuff?
Oh, yes, and you know, this is, this is a running, a running matter that has been going on for quite a while. Uh back in the day, uh bless her heart, Jenny Lambert put some policy in place in the city, that's how long, how far back this goes. Having to do with, uh say for instance, um you know, over oversized commercial vehicles. Uh having to do with bringing your your vehicles to home, right, but and then it went a little further because. Um there was other concerns from uh residents most recently and it's kind of like a combo. Um and 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 I'm bringing both together so that everybody can understand the enforcement portion of this. But um I'm sure every morning or so you wake up and there's literature on your car.
Yes, yes, yes.
Whether it's a business card, whether it's a flyer in your windshield, whether, whatever it is, and we all know. That oftentimes, people just take off and drive with this stuff on their cars. Or say for instance, they'll they'll get it and they'll just toss it onto the ground, right? Well, previously, we've had um enforcement uh contact. Those businesses that have literature and marketing material left on vehicles and provide a warning. To those entities basically saying this is not allowed, right? And for the most part, some stop, they stop because they've been advised that you can't do that. However, it's my understanding that we have policy on the books that says you could get a permit. And still uh be able to do this. Um I I have a concern with that and and the reason for the concern is, again, it's it's. It's in my opinion, not truly providing um a sense of uh uh. Marketing, their their programs, their services, et cetera, because at the end of the day, it goes in the trash. And I don't think anybody is benefiting from this, so I want to provide further instruction and direction. That we pull policy from these types of uh uh handouts, these types of practices that are being done in the city. Uh and there are a few, uh I know in my community, I know in the North Hawthorne community, I know also further in um. The 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 community that's closer to Inglewood Avenue, it it happens pretty much everywhere, but I want to uh. Bring that, bring back that policy, I'd like uh City Attorney Mister Kim to look on the legality of this matter. On how maybe we could just ultimately put a stop to it if there's that opportunity. Since we are a a city that generates our own laws and and they become law after uh council approval thirty days. Um and I think we just need to keep enforcing the warning policy. Uh and just advising those entities that are using individuals or persons to put this material on vehicles. Uh to warn them by giving them a phone call and letting them know that this is not allowed. Um and and it 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 just is, it, we're trying to keep our city clean and we're trying to pick up all of our bulkies, all of our trash. And having this type of material on our streets isn't helping any and it's 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 and it's not, um in my opinion. Something that we wanna continue, but if there's a way also, um you know, maybe. Letting these entities know that currently right now, we don't have buildings, open facilities that they could just come and put their literature at, right? Sometimes they bring it to city hall, they put it in the lobby, sometimes they put it at the wreck and parks department, so currently we're still in a, in a, you know, position of. Uh you know, having material uh not dispersed, um you know, through through public contact. And you know, this 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 other way of putting out their information isn't the way to go either, so. I wanna know how we could work collectively in addressing those individuals, but then at the same time. Uh you know, something that we 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 don't ultimately allow here, and I know it's, it's one of those tough things, but. Uh some, someone has to take a stance of uh doing better, so.
I'll look into that.
Count, count, Councilwoman uh English, um I I join you, uh I brought it up also, well, a few years ago. Also, I don't know, you you remember I brought it up and you brought it up too, we both brought it up at their separate times, so this. Still hasn't improved, the stuff's still there, so you got those little business cards that they put on your, on the, on the window, on your driver's side?
Yeah.
And it's the same one that keeps putting it, it's about used cars. Used car parts or something, you know, sell your car for used car parts, it's the same one.
Right.
I asked, I asked our previous city attorneys, the uh assistant city attorneys that were with us before. And they said, okay, yeah, we're gonna look into it, look into it, but nothing was done, so I'm glad you brought it up again, I really wanna eliminate that. These, these cards are on there, they get, they get flicked off, they end up on the ground and it adds to our. Uh the streets uh not being kept clean, so. And then there's other things that are placed on there, it's those cards that really annoy me too, there's just no reason why these people. They're paying, they're paying people to walk throughout the city and put them on every single car and.
Yeah.
These people are just working, I know, but you got these people are probably paying them pennies, you know, to put these things up and. You know, they're just pawns, but we just have to get it to stop and come up, can you come up with some type of plan? Uh Mister City Attorney and uh Mister uh City Manager, just some plan where. Um our code of, our code enforcement, I think our code enforcement, we really need to talk to about, talk about our code enforcement really, but that's a separate issue.
And can I go ahead and ask for, um you know, let's have an action discussion item with regards to enforcement regulations and the do's and. And don'ts, and I think it's important that we add that because we have uh additional things that we want to have. Enforcement look at and basically have a rule of thumb through legal matters on what we can and cannot do when it comes to. Uh notices, when it comes to enforcement, I know we have issues with regard to our vendors. Uh and we still haven't wrapped that tight and that includes the having the three permits that are required. To do vending and it doesn't sound like we have that yet and we still have, um not sure whether or not we could enforce and I guarantee you, we can enforce. Um the other matter is, just as a scenario, in the city of Los Angeles, they have these big uh containers that say. Drop off containers for clothing and it's the ones where you just dump clothing. Well, they're not notifying the city, what they're doing is they're just putting them all over the place, right? These big old canisters, they look like trash bins, you open them up and you could just dump all your clothes in there. But what happens is, it's not just coming inside the the, into the container, it's all over the sidewalk and it just blighted, anyway. So what happened is um enforcement, street services enforcement have uh deputies that are on the sidewalks and. What they do is, they get the information of uh of of these folks that are doing that. And they basically, uh it's a legal matter, it's a cease and assist and they have to come and pick up their containers. And it's funny because I've been physically there uh on site where you have a a a big truck coming and taking off the. Containers off the truck to post them on a sidewalk or deliver them and when enforcement is there, they just have them pick them right back up, put them inside the truck. And they end up getting the registration of the vehicle that has the actual business name, owner name and address and that's how they're able to stop it. So it was very interesting how um you know, some businesses try to not be identified through a name or a. A business, et cetera, but uh having that car registration in the vehicle that shows the entity of the owner and address. Uh made that stop fairly quickly, fast, so just a couple of uh.
Thank you.
Insight.
It's good stuff, okay, uh thank you so much, we're going to move on. It's good stuff, okay, uh thank you so much, we're going to move on to. Elected officials' reports and recommendations, we're gonna start off with our city treasurer, Fallon, go ahead, sir. City Treasurer.
I'm right here, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Right. Yeah, just, you know, uh I'm gonna give you a little update, I think the next meeting, I'll do the investment report, uh so we can check all that stuff out. Uh interest rates are crazy lows, uh not not great for earning income, but it is what it is. Uh and then also, you know, I'm trying to uh, you know, authorize uh the uh the city of Hawthorne to put some more money. Uh into MBS so that we can buy stuff that returns more, because we do have some money. Um and I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Uh Mister City Treasurer, uh what what monies, what pot of monies are you recommend, are will you be recommending for us to reinvest? Can you, can you give us a general idea?
Yeah, absolutely, you know, I think uh based on the the availability of information what I have. Uh of course, it's always, I want progress versus perfection, but definitely, I think the city could at least put five million dollars for sure. Safely into investments, you know, over a one to five year period. Uh cause the goal is putting stuff into those, the only risk is that there's no risk of losing money, there's just a risk that if you need the money and you pull it out. Uh then you have to sell the the fixed security, and if interest rates change, you can lose money. But you don't lose anything if you just hold everything to maturity, and that's exactly what the city does. And we leave plenty of chub so that you don't have to, you know, sell uh these fixed instruments, and there's definitely enough there. Uh but, you know, there's a lot, you know, going on, and there's all these funds coming in, but it's hard, do I think there could be more? Yes, but this is at least a reasonable amount, and again, it's more about uh you know, progress versus perfection. So I would love to see a system where we know exactly, you know, how much we could, you know, take out. And we have all these projections and and cash flow projections uh into the future, but um you know, we just don't have that right now. But uh this would be a great start.
Thank you so much, sir, thank you.
Cheers.
Cheers, uh Mister City Clerk Paul Jimenez?
Yes, uh I'll be brief, uh so yeah, first of all, thank you to everyone watching from home. So a couple of updates, first of all, happy National Voter Registration Day, so if anyone's watching and they're not registered to vote, please go to L A Vote Net. To register, um the good news, Governor Newsom just signed a bill making it permanent, the permanent that all registered voters in California. Will receive a mail in ballot, so that's good news. Uh regarding the recent uh recall election, overall, it was a smooth process in Hawthorne, the longest line was at Memorial Center. On election night, and it was about thirty minutes, but that was just for a short amount of time. Overall, the site coordinators shared that um the foot traffic was was minimal. Um in regards to COVID nineteen, uh as I've shared in the past, if you haven't, please get vaccinated. Um unfortunately, over twenty-five thousand people have died in L A County, and about ninety-nine percent of those individuals that were were not fully vaccinated. So again, uh for information on locations to get vaccinated, go to vaccinate L A County dot com. And then to end, I just want to congratulate Councilmember Montero, Vaughn, and the rest of the staff and volunteers that were responsible for World Fest. Um yeah, I went to the opening ceremony with Luca, our ten month old, then I returned with uh in a, you know, a few hours later with my wife. Uh there's some Pablo, my parents, um we just had an amazing time, so uh thank you again to everyone involved, uh it was very apparent that there was a lot of good energy. That was uh spent on putting that event together, so uh congratulations to all, and that's every, that's all on my end, thanks.
Thank you so much, sir, uh Councilmember Montero?
Uh thank you, Mister Mayor. Again, I just want to say thank you to all uh the public that would tune in to listen to us, the staff. And all the presentation that was pretty good, so thank you to all. Um before I go to the World Fest, I want to give a directive, okay, especially I don't know if Alan. Long is listened from the public works. Um the Lamoli uh street has been having a lot of uh car accidents. And then even some injuries and some of fatality have happened there and property damage, peop- uh cars have been speeding on that street. On Lamoli, so I would like to see if uh can come up with a warden's or a resolution for next meeting. For us to vote to put speed humps on uh on Lamoli, especially from one thirty fifth to Rose Grant. So one thirty fifth to one thirty nine, one thirty nine to Rose Grant on Lamoli. Uh because for these past two months, they have had four car ha- accidents there and one fatality uh dead on that street. Uh so if I can have that for next meeting, I appreciate it. What I like, uh Doctor Jimenez just mentioned, um we had the first annual Hawthorne World Fest. Uh to, you know, showcase our diversity in the city of Hawthorne. So it took place on Saturday the eighteen, and it went beyond my expectation, it was a huge success. Um thank you for the planning committee, uh Mister Northern Von Norris, Mister Agbar, Selena Acuña, Miss Brenda William. Miss Kavana Bowie, Miss Jerry Variate, Eric Chavez, and Hawthorne Police Department, especially Lieutenant Amy Oshivi and Captain Lane. Without the commitment and the outstanding work from the city staff and the volunteers, we couldn't achieve the success and the fun that the people enjoy. Special thanks to all the orange shorts from Public Works and Parks Racks who helped us set up. The food trucks estimated that about fifteen hundred people uh were in attendance. We raised forty thousand one hundred eighty dollar, again, forty thousand one hundred eighty dollar for the event. Thanks to the thirteen major sponsors, thank you to all the business partners who unselfishly donated to the event. No general fund was used to acquire any of the equipment, performance, materials, supplies, and the L A County Department permit. At the end, we have a surplus of eleven thousand dollar. So um so and uh when I finish, we'll play a little video that Eric Chavez have have put together. Farmers market, the operator, myself, and the Park and Max Department staff decided to suspend the farmers market until next spring of next year. We are thinking to bring it back on a weekly basis eh from the Memorial Day to the Labor Day weekend. But I have to say that it is shameful that we have council colleagues that instead of promoting the city sponsored event. They are asking their friends not to participate in those events. So we are all elected to fulfill our constituent needs to provide and improve service. And help them feel proud of our city when we put these community celebrations together for the enjoyment. I will repeat, it is for the people, not for our personal joy. As council members, we should work together for the benefit of our residents and work not to sabotage each other's events. So on Thursday, October twenty first, at five P M, the Hawthorne President's Council is hosting a community dinner. At Memorial Center, which will benefit the holiday assistance program. It would be spaghetti dinner with choice of sausages, ground turkey, or ground beef. Thursday, October twenty first at five P M, so five dollar for adults, two fifty for children. Again, it's to raise money so we can be able to feed some families during Thanksgiving and Christmas. So again, uh Mister Eric Chavez, if you can play that uh World Fest video, I appreciate it, thank you.
Go ahead, uh.
In case you missed it, Hawthorne held its first annual world festival celebrating cultural diversity. With food, music, games, and more.
Hundreds of people gathered at the Hawthorne Memorial Center to celebrate culture.
You know how Hawthorne is so diverse, and we have different cultures, different people from different parts of the world. So we wanted to celebrate unity, diversity, and integration of the whole cultures in the city of Hawthorne.
You were here having fun, enjoying the kids, being with the community.
There was beautiful music from all sorts of cultures, and the residents were happy to get out of the house and enjoy live performance and activities.
It's amazing, so many booths, so many diverse participants. Uh the food trucks are amazing, the support system that they have, very clean environment. Nice people, um wonderful things for the kids.
Carlos came with his wife and kids, and they're enjoying the diverse amount of food all around at World Fest.
A lot of vendors too, a lot of variety for us to come out here and pick and choose.
That was just a small preview of what's to come, stay tuned for the full World Fest video. That will dive deeper into the multicultural experience that had the neighborhood talking.
Thank you, staff, and again, thank you for all the volunteers and all the business. And especially, like I said, you know, the Orange Shirt, Public Works, and the Racks Department for making that event a successful. Thank you very much.
Okay, uh Councilmember English, please.
Thank you, Mayor, uh well, first, let me just, you know, congratulate uh Councilmember Montero and everyone that worked on the event. I understand it was Councilmember Valentine, and let me just mention uh Councilman Montero. I've been getting calls and I've been receiving emails about what a great event it was. I I I wish I I would have attended, I was at a conference, and um to be honest, I was not aware of the. The the how large this thing was, I was not part of that committee or on the council during that time. But uh kudos to you and everyone's efforts, including uh our city staff, which um, you know, we we hold valuable. To us, especially with helping in on our streets and 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 police as well, so kudos. And I I did watch it on YouTube, I did see the footage on that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Um, um eh and the money that you raised, that's amazing, uh I look forward to the October twenty first, um. It's gonna be at the Memorial Center, and I think uh like like this event that just happened, the the, you know, Festival World Fest. Everybody's eager, they're hungry, they want to come out of their homes, they want to participate, they want to engage, you know, and um. Uh we're we're, you know, we're we're tired, we're tired of of not being able to um enjoy ourselves, so. Uh I look forward to, you know, engagement from various uh organizations and groups that have future endeavors on events here in our city. And welcome that, so thank you for that. Um there's a couple of things I want to mention, um that I'd like to see come back on an agenda. Uh our solar panels, I want to know what we're doing with our so- solar panels, I want to know the procedures, the cost, and the permitting processes. Inornances and things that we need to bring back to the council, uh there's still not a clear understanding on exactly what those costs are, the benefits. Uh to our uh homeowners that have solar panels, the processes and the permitting, and that's something that we need to work on. And that's across the board, not just on solar panels, but uh all kinds of work, uh construction and and uh those alike, so. Please bring back some uh policy to review for um any additional um consideration vote that is needed to make sure these. Processes are done correctly, um also, I want to um commend the facade program, I think it's a great program, I wish we had additional monies. If there's a way to uh allocate additional monies, I'm all for it, and if there's something that we need to bring back to the council uh to put dollars in there. Um I think um our leaders such as um City Manager Norris, uh City Attorney Kim. And Planning Department needs to do that for us so that we could do that. Um there's some concerns at Glasgow Park uh with regards to the park maintenance. Uh I understand that uh the doggy bags are full, there isn't uh adequate or sufficient um review of those um. Bags that need to ultimately be replaced and and those, you know, get overfilled, and then you have, you know, other other things going on there. Especially uh standing water uh and things like this, so can we get some uh assistance through Public Works and staff to go over to Glasgow Park? Maintain the parks, whoever is allocated to do that, uh I don't know if it's a third party or not, but if we could do that um and get that addressed once and for all. Uh I understand that um there is a. Water fountains also, the fountains along the path are not working, so please, the water, um the water fountains along the path. And the doggy bags uh need to be refilled. Um and there's a couple still things that I'm seeing in the community with regards to dumping. Uh the corner of of Prairie and Broadway, right at the corner there, there's mattresses that are leaning up on the telephone post. That's been there for over a week now, uh there's still things that I am seeing in the community that need to be addressed. Um I want a status report on how we're gonna address it, and I want it uh fairly quickly. And if there is um things that need to be put in place to assure that these um concerns are addressed with regards to dumping. Uh we need to do that ASAP, um and that includes um additional staff. That includes additional time in which we're reviewing our city to get those things picked up in partnership with Republic War uh Republic uh Services. And with regards to um, you know, a a a a plan, a a a plan of action, a plan of action. And uh immediate rapid response, and so I want that ASAP. Um I want to just go over a little um, a little couple of things that I um that I did. Uh in attending the conferences that um, in my opinion, were were good conferences, a lot of information. Uh one was um independent cities, uh independent contracts, and that's something that we belong to. Uh there was uh discussions and 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 um seminars and things that were happening, and I and I and I. I really grabbed this information because there's so many other cities similar to ours. With similar issues and concerns, and by trying to see what other cities have done to address those concerns. Those are the things that I hope to walk away with, not necessarily to implement, but ultimately use ideas and suggestions. That have helped along the way, and so um as a voting delegate, I could just make mention, it was a long process just for the vote. And as a deli- a voting delegate, they want you to stay in the room and be present and be able to vote. And there is debate that happens on the floor, and there are um um, you know, debates that don't happen on the floor. And that is voted on by those delegates that want to hear uh debate or not, and let me tell you, there were some anxious people to get out of the room and quickly. But um we had uh what they have, uh what they did was procedures by by uh by bylaws, amendments, processes. There was presentations by the bylaws and amendments, there was a vote of bylaws and amendments, there was procedures of resolution and processes. And then there was general matters that had to do with committees, there was also uh the vote of resolutions. And so uh again, there's a lot of information that is required, and I don't, I know I don't have the time here to do that. But uh some interesting facts that I found interesting were the uh Housing, Community and Economic Development Committees. Where they uh hear things like railroad property maintenance, which is important to our city, since we have railroads running through our cities. And um online sales tax equity, that was very important, and also securing railroad property maintenance. And all of those things are important to our city for different reasons, and uh you have to keep in mind that our cities are not sometimes. Uh city, there are cities that don't necessarily fall in these types of categories, and then there are cities that do. And one of the 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 big topics was taxation, taxation on delivery. And that includes deliveries such as FedEx, UPS, things like this, and then it also included um large warehouses. That uh have deliver deliverable of goods and services, and what I mean by that is large warehouses like we have. Uh you know, um Amazon, uh other large uh uh warehouses. And online sales ta- ta- tax equity, and let me just make mention real quick. Uh those those votes that came up on the floor were ultimately sent back for recommendation to the City Managers Committee. So in fact, even though we were told we had to stay there and long time uh standing, listening to discussions and listening to. Uh other information, at the end of the day, we didn't have to take a vote, it was sent back to committee to city managers, and so um a- again. Um good information, uh one of the other uh uh um conferences I attended. Uh did worked were um had to do really with leadership, uh Leadership Lessons From The Happiest Place On Earth, The Wisdom Of Walt. And let me tell you, this book is amazing, and this the presenter that presented was amazing, and uh he was a wealth of information. And although uh some of the discussion was around Walt Disney and what Walt did during the times of the of developing uh Walt Disney. Um over in Anaheim, a lot of it had to do with uh hopes and dreams, and ultimately what you could do to to make those. Uh hopes and dreams come true, and leadership skills that were um may have mentioned, actually, uh I I I was really tuned into that. And I think all of us could learn and and grow from this even more. Um also got a chance to to uh listen to Pastor uh Father Boyle, and I don't know, um. Mayor, if you're familiar with Pastor Boyle, but he's in Los Angeles, and he has uh Homeboy Industries, and basically, um this book also has um. Lessons learned and 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 also the, you know, the power of uh ba- boundless compassion. And um although some of the stories here are um are, you know, not necessarily those types of stories that we were um. Maybe raised with or or have gone through, but just to be able to read some of the stories here. Uh gives us great hope and uh coming from a a father and uh his heart in in what he did to help those. Uh in need is just amazing book. Um once more, in in closing, I I can't say enough about Angel City Football. uh club and uh looking forward to the partnership here and ultimately what it's gonna do in the community. It's gonna benefit uh in in revitalizing the area, it's gonna bring families together. It's gonna uh provide for more soccer to those that are already playing in those small uh tennis courts that are currently there, it's just gonna be uh something that I think the city of Hawthorne is is uh yet to 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 see and um we're gonna be the better for it, and so I can't say enough on that. Um we had a great council meeting tonight, um I think at the end of the day, we're all trying to push what's important for our residents and what matters most to them. Uh and it's my hope that um there is participation, I understand that there's callers that are calling to the city clerk's office, and I want to assure that the city clerk's office is answering those phones. Um I wanna make sure if we've got policy that's mandated by the state that we have to adhere to that we ultimately have the city clerk's office also on notice with regards to picking up those calls and making sure that those people's voices are heard. So moving forward, um thanks again to everybody and councilman Patterson for your partnership with Angels Football Club, thank you.
Okay, uh let's see, council member Patterson please.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, a couple things. First, I wanna thank the community for tuning in and she's been involved in this whole process, right, you know, uh your voice is always needed, right? For us to make the best decisions on behalf of of the community. I wanna thank all staff for your hard work, I know um you know many staff came to work early today and still online this evening and and gotta work a lot of late nights to make all this stuff happen, so definitely appreciate it. I was contacted by former councilman, Mr. Neil Michelin about some dumping, so I just wanted to share this to the city manager for you to address it in whatever way makes the most amount of sense. Uh he wanted to inform me, there's been some dumping uh on the side of one three eight zero one Hawthorne Boulevard. Uh inside graphics, so I'm not sure if that's still there or if that can be looked at and addressed, that'd be great. Uh earlier today, we had a presentation from our interim HR director. And I appreciate that presentation and the outlining uh the progress with all the improvement that needs to be done. I really want to express my desire that we make it a priority to staff that office, right? So that the rest of these uh departments can be supported. Interns in in our city clerk's office was brought up earlier, um which reminded me to wanna say you know, I think that's a very kind of smart um uh idea to have some interns support in city hall. It um you know, gives to the to the student as well as provide support for city hall. And so if somebody can give me a little bit more in- information on how possibly we can have some interns support the council as well. And I'm not sure what that would look like, if that's possible, but I'd love to get some information about that. Um I think that's a great, a great thing to 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 do, you know, help us and also help the the youth as well. Uh I wanna congratulate council member Montero for a successful event, I apologize I wasn't to attend, but uh the stats, the information that that you shared about about your event is spectacular. I I'm excited to see that we have community events again in Hawthorne. Um I used to love that, people used to always have jokes about I'm always at an event all the time, at one point. You know, three times a week, there is someplace to be in Hawthorne with uh some type of dinner or 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 something going on at the parks, it's good to see these are are back in the city. I know the community is enjoying them, I'm glad to hear that the communities feel safe in coming out and participating in these events. What's next? I did attend a couple conferences last week. Uh attended the uh Contract Cities Conference, I attended the uh League of California Cities as well, representing the city of Hawthorne. Uh uh our our uh city manager, our interim city manager attended those as well, it was a great opportunity uh for me to engage in some professional development, I really understand what other cities are doing. I get some insights into um ways to really benefit our city. And so I've had had a great opportunity to really have some good conversations with our interim city manager, kinda discuss some of those ideas. Um and hopefully we can implement some of the the ideas that were shared uh at those conferences, some of the things I learned at those conferences. And really looking forward to it, um um definitely excited about about, like I said, some like implementation. Some of those ideas and really making our city a little bit more efficient, um and work with our city manager and get that stuff done. It also reminded me of the value of personal and professional development, so I just wanna throw that out there for the city managers that have it back in your your mind. Whenever possible or appropriate for n- uh not just staff to always have opportunities for them to grow in their positions and their position of leadership, but also for uh us council members as well. Um you know, there's nothing, nothing more important than having uh been growing in your leadership, especially when you're uh steward other people um and finances and all that good stuff, so I'm always interested in those opportunities for myself and and you know, whatever way that you know our council, our city can benefit from continued professional, personal development, let's let's definitely look out for those opportunities. Uh I want to ask to put on the next agenda, um more than likely probably be a closed um a closed session uh with the council, but a a six month performance evaluation slash contract discussion for our interim city manager, interim city attorney. Yeah, and uh that's about it.
Okay, uh uh mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, um so I too would like to congratulate um council member Montero on the World Fest. I attended it, um it it's great PR for the city because people came out with their families and um they were exposed to different cultures, different costumes from different different communities. The bands were really fabulous. Um and I think that uh everything like this creates great PR for the city and continues to put Hawthorne on the map, and I too am happy to see people out again and um people enjoying the the community of Hawthorne, we are the city of good neighbors. And I too miss the, all of the um activities that we used to have as a city, and this was a great a resurgence of those activities. Um a few years ago, based on my directive, the council passed a resolution requiring that commercial property owners keep their properties clean. And this was to be enforced by a a cleaning schedule, uh which would be um observed by our staff. And there would be finding where appropriate when this cleaning schedule was not adhered to. The si- the cleaning schedule had to be available to the to the code enforcement when it came to see, they had they had to be able to see the cleaning schedule. And the cleaning schedule had to be adhered to and um it uh it it was supposed to be, there were supposed to be fines as consequences if this was not done. And recently, I've had the opportunity to just go around the city and look at different areas, and I'm not going to throw anyone under the bus. But I have, I have seen at parking uh parking lots that were really not clean at all, and I did advise our our um city manager about this. But um I would like to know that this is being done, that our parking stand, our our cleaning standards are being enforced. We do have standards and I'd like to see them being enforced, so I'm going to ask for a directive that at the next council meeting, we have a report from code enforcement on the um the the uh enforcements, the enforcement um monitoring that they've been doing and the consequences that they've been enforcing, I wanna make sure that these cleaning standards are adhered to, the whole reason for for that cle- that resolution was to make sure that our city stays clean, people have a right to to shop in clean circumstances. Ple- people have a right to go and if they're going to um a fitness center, they have the right to um to walk in in clean in in a in a clean environment. And it makes our city look good when when things look good and when things are clean. So I'd like to get that, uh I'd like, I'm making a directive to please let us see a report on what uh monitoring has been done by code enforcement, what they have found and what finding has been done where they have found violations. Just a couple of things from the South Bay Council of Governments. So um on Thursday, September thirtieth, the South Bay Council of Governments, the the uh arm of it, which is the the Environmental Services Center is going to have a a chat from West Basin, that's our um our water water agency. Called how do I get my grass replacement rebate? Thursday, September thirtieth, from five thirty to six. Um and it says, before you get started, join West Basin online for an interactive discussion with its water efficiency experts who will answer your questions about the grass replacement rebate application process. The chat will begin with a brief overview of the rebate program and will be followed by a Q and A session where staff will answer any specific questions you have about the program. Bring your questions and learn how this popular program can help you go drought friendly and get big savings. Grass replacement rebate starts at three dollars per square foot of grass removed, and you can register at the um by law uh by um law um by um emailing info at southbaycities.org. And uh you can register for that program, that's uh for that uh that that seminar, and it's going to be Thursday, September thirtieth for five thirty P M. And then also, also from the South Bay Council of Governments, the announcement about the twenty first annual general assembly. Save March twenty fourth, twenty twenty two to attend the South Bay Cogs Signature Forum that engages local thought leaders on issues impacting the South Bay region, this year's theme is back to the future, reimagining the South Bay. And that's all I have, thank you all.
Alright, thank you, are there any go backs from any of our council member colleagues? No, okay, alright, uh so yes, we do have a series of events that are taking place here in the city. And the World Fest was one of them, uh wanna give kudos to my council member colleague Alex Montero for his event. A very successful event, and there was fifteen hundred people, I think, I think there were actually more. So I I showed up for a about an hour and a half, I had to go to a an event for my nephew. Was not able to return, but I heard that it was even triple in size uh after I had left. The performers were were awesome, and I was there when the folkloric dancers were uh about to dance. Uh we had a band from one of the local churches, uh I got to see our county supervisor Holly Mitchell who was there, and I know that I heard that uh our congresswoman showed up a little bit later. So I was really, really happy to see that there was so much participation from all the different groups, so um kudos to you, councilman Montero, and the team that worked with you, I was very happy to see that uh it's just a lot of coordination and you have a knack for organizing events, I mean, straight up, that's what it is.
But Mr. Mayor, kudos to all for all of us, okay, so we 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 represent the cities, not just Montero. But I wanna make sure that we got you understand that this event is, we put this event as a city as a council members, as a staff for the city of Hawthorne, because that is what we elected to offering people some hope, right?
I I I appreciate you mentioning that, but the reality is
Not about me.
But you were the brainchild of this, this originated from you, so uh I do wanna recognize that.
Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you.
And then all our staff members who helped in, uh I know that's uh every, all the staff members had different ideas and they all contributed, so it was seen in effect. And this is going to be one of our signature events that takes place from year to year, so let's continue supporting this event. And all the other events that we have, uh we also have uh we have the Earth Day at the Service Provider Fair. Uh I helped you start that one, remember Angie, and then you kind of ran with it and then councilor Montero uh helped out with that, now you're back Angie and like
We're gonna, we're gonna do Operation Gobble.
And she's gonna, yeah, and she's gonna help.
That's uh everything, so there's just a lot of events, man, I have my basketball tournament coming up in a in a few weeks too. Falling ball tournament.
And don't forget the business expo.
Council member Patterson, I think we were gonna try to have a pool tournament, right? We talked about that, but that's for fun for the community, we have teams, you know, just for fun, just for fun, different things for fun. So we'll 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 all collaborate on different things at different points, so.
You know, the teen center has a pool table.
They do, but hopefully we could move it to a central location so we can have a little kind of
They do.
They do.
Yeah.
Put them out in the parking lot.
I don't know, just an idea, we could figure something out, so like on the serious, I'm really happy about that. But uh on a more serious note, um uh I'm just gonna be plain and simple and get to the point, you guys know when I get upset, I kinda get upset a little bit, and uh this is probably the fifth or sixth time that I've mentioned at a council meeting, the the trash the the dirtiness that we see at every single one of our parking lots in somewhere in our shopping centers.
On the street.
And on the street, on Hawthorne Boulevard, behind the stores on Hawthorne Boulevard. And I always mention it, and council members bring it up here and there too, and you know, we all mention it. I'm sick and tired of it. Our code enforcement group is lacking in its performance. I'll say it again, and I'll say it again, I had some a resident that sent me an email last week. And which they said, my neighbors in my neighborhood are calling Hawthorne Little South Central. I, they mentioned that, but I felt, I disagreed with them, but
Now, that's like
Okay, and I disagree with them because there's a big difference, okay, so I did, I opened, hey, what are you talking about? But for our residents to call for hel- call for help by having to go to that extreme to try to, you know, make their point. So I just really don't feel that our code enforcement group is working uh as as well as it should be. Um we've, I know council uh mayor Pro Tem Valentine has had the cleaning schedules. It works for one day and then it keeps happening. I go shopping in our local, in our central uh shopping centers, uh council member Montero and councilwoman English and uh council member Patterson, I believe you guys go into the local shopping centers, you guys see what I'm talking about. It's just trash all over the place. So it is not working, I would like to have uh our city attorney and our city manager for the next meeting to have an action discussion under my name, and anybody else who would like to put their name, or let's just have it. Something in which we call this code enfor- it's, we're not HR and we're not doing a performance review, but the performance of the code deport- the effectiveness or the performance of the code uh enforcement department. Whatever is appropriate so that we can all vent our concerns, disappointments. Uh I, we were supposed to have daily citations on all these shopping centers for these for these uh owners of these lots who are keeping, allowing this to keep on getting dirty and dirty and dirty and the trash collecting. I I do not like people trying to compare us to these beach cities and Torrance and all these other cities where they can all you gotta do is go over here and their spark parking lots are nice and clean and Hawthorne, okay. It's reached the limit, I really wanna have a very critical view of our code enforcement department. So Mr. City Attorney and and Vaughn, can you uh fashion a correct uh the correct verbiage so that we can have a a type of performance review of the department itself, the effectiveness, please?
We can just make a general discussion regarding code enforcement and and staff related, but it won't be a closed session.
No, it has to be uncovered.
Yes.
I want people to hear, I want the residents to know that we're taking their, that we 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 see what they see, that's all. And that we, that we wanna take some concrete uh decisions and actions on uh changing the the face of our community.
We'll 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 set an agenda item for discussion, action item for uh code enforcement issues.
We have, what did we say that the the price, the values of the homes here in Hawthorne uh surpassed the average around the around the county, right? We need to make sure, we need to make sure that the cleanliness of our cities We need to make sure, we need to make sure that the cleanliness of our cities, parking lots and and our streets, I'll go hand in hand with that, okay? And just for the, for those residents who live here and who are frustrated that have to go to the extent of, you know, reaching out to us and saying these intense things, so. Thank you guys, all and uh I appreciate everybody for being here. Uh we had a relatively short meeting compared to the previous ones that we've had, so if there's no further discussion from staff. Um, I adjourn this meeting.
Amen, good night.